Thank you for attending the October 2nd, 2018, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to imply that the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for
Since our last county commission meeting, Buncombe County has lost one of the great public servants who represented our county and the state of North Carolina for many years. On Tuesday, September 25th, Marie Colton passed away. Marie Colton served in the North Carolina House of Representatives from 1978 to 1994. During that time, she was elected Speaker pro tem, making her the second highest ranking official in the state House of Representatives. She remains the highest ranking woman in the history of the North Carolina House of Representatives. Representative Colton used her leadership position to advocate for public schools, environmental stewardship, early childhood education, and many other issues. For her years of service, she was awarded by Governor Roy Cooper the Order of the Longleaf Pine, which is North Carolina's highest honor awarded to citizens for civic duty in our state. A memorial service will be held at 1:00 PM on October 6th at Trinity Episcopal Church. On behalf of the Buncombe County Commission, we wish to extend our condolences to the Colton family. And before we start our meeting this evening, let's hold a moment of silence for prayer and reflection to give thanks for the life and service of Marie Colton. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to ask everyone to please place your cellphones on silent mode or turn them off. Also wanted to announce that the county has parking validation and bus passes for folks who attend county commission meetings. So if you've used the county parking garage to travel to park for this meeting, or if you use public transportation, the sheriff's deputies who are here with us this evening have validation for those. So you can get, please feel free to talk to them, and they'll help you out with that. Let me read the ethics reminder to the board before we move into the consent agenda. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety with the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which will have a direct substantial and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board this evening." Also, before we move into the consent agenda, I wanted to just make an announcement that Commissioner Frost has another obligation that's going to start right around 7:00 PM. So we may be done with our business by then, but if not, Commissioner Frost will need to attend that other meeting. So just wanted to let everyone know about that. All right. And could we have a motion to add three items to the consent agenda for, under new business, for our meeting this evening? Those three items would be to appoint Wayne Gentry, to consider appointing Wayne Gentry to the North Carolina County Commissioner Association. We'll have some more details on that when we get to that. Another is to consider an extension on a purchase option regarding the Ferry Road property. And finally, to revise the schedule of county commissioner meetings such that we would meet on October 30th, but would not meet on November 6th. So moved? Further discussion?
Is the name correct that you read for Gentry?
I think it's Norris Gentry.
Okay. Thank you for that correction.
And you said consent agenda, but you meant agenda, right?
I'm sorry. This is to add these to the agenda, and we'll take them up under new...
Right.
You know what? Why don't we, these are so easy. Why don't we just take them up right after we approve this motion and just get them done?
Do we do three? Do we need to do three or one? Is one okay? One motion?
One motion to add.
Okay. One motion to add all three items.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that correction. All right. All in favor of the motion to add these items to the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's just knock these out. On the Norris Gentry appointment to the North Carolina County Commissioner Association, Mr. Wood, could you share a few more details about that?
Yes. As you recall, we did not have forum at the convention, the convention for our district, which is District 16. We have a four county district. Subsequent to that, they tried to have a telephone meeting. They did not have a forum on that. So what they've done is...
They have had a nomination of Mr. Gentry, and the reason is that Madison County has never had, since 1986, has never had anybody who served as the district director. So I think that out of a sense of fairness, they're recommending his name. And so that's where we're at on it. And I need to report back to them by Friday, whatever your wishes are.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion of the second to appoint Norris Gentry. All in favor. We will take public comment on any matters we vote on. So is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this motion? All right. Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item is, there's been a discussion about moving our, revising our county commission meeting schedule to meet on October 30th, but to not meet on November 6th. Is there a motion on that matter?
So moved. Everybody should vote. Second?
Yeah.
He wants to go play. For discussion, I'm not wearing a costume that night. I'm not.
Okay. It's October 30th, not 31st.
But just calm as you are, Joe. You'll be fine.
Some people do it all week.
Some people might think we're already in costume.
Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on this? Seeing none?
Oh, we got one.
All right. Yes, sir.
I'll be real quick. Be sure and speak into your mics, because I know I'm getting hard of hearing, but I moved close to the front and I still can't hear you. And that goes sometimes with the staff. And I think each and every one of you ought to have to wear a costume.
Shouldn't open that door.
All right. Thank you. Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The third item added is consideration of a time extension request on the purchase option for the Ferry Road property. Mr. Wood?
I'm gonna ask Michael to go over that with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Board, we had a quest under, we currently have a contract with Carnegie Holdings for $526,500. They made a deposit back in February to purchase the property, the 137 acre tract out on Ferry Road. They've been working on their due diligence. They reported a couple weeks ago, let me back up a second, the due diligence period required, allowed for a quote unquote "free look" for, from the time the contract was signed in February through September 22nd. They contacted the county just prior to that date and informed of various issues they've hit, including going before the city technical review committee. The TRC asked them to come back, and they're not scheduled to go to city planning zoning until November. They also have similar timing obstacles with state DOT. Their title search has disclosed challenges regarding right-of-way access and the possible need to acquire small strips of property from adjoining owners along Drive Ferry and Ferry Road. It is Mr. Wood's recommendation, am I own, to, they requested 120 days. Our recommendation is to allow them 20 or 90 more days to continue that due diligence, and then allow them to extend for six more months. The current contract allows for an extension from the September 22nd date through March 22nd, $10,000 a month, which would be non-refundable if they pulled out of the contract. If they proceed, that money would go toward the purchase price. So they're asking for 120 days of extended due diligence before they would start paying the $10,000 for extensions. Our recommendation is 90 days. And I know there's some various opinions amongst the Board, so we'll just leave it to you. I mean, I think some of the options were leave it as is, in which case they would owe us $10,000 now for the first month extension to get into March. A second option would be to allow what they're requesting for either 120 days or a lesser amount of 90 days, or there was discussion about split the difference, let them go for these three additional months, or perhaps four at $5,000 a month before the $10,000 additions. But the short version is they are hitting some obstacles that neither the county nor they could have anticipated prior to due diligence. If we did reject it and they pulled out for any reason, we have every reason to believe that we'd be required to disclose some of these findings to an additional buyer, and we wouldn't save any time. So it's a year-long process, I think, for almost any developer to step in and make it work.
All right. Thank you very much.
So you said $500,000?
We have it now.
That's what we have now?
They paid...
Five point five.
Their bid is $5,250,000. So I think I butchered that a little bit.
Yeah, I think you did.
Their 5% deposit was $262,500.
Yeah. I just want to make sure the public knew it was 5.25 million.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. So there's a recommendation on a 90-day extension, and then if they need more time, there'd be $10,000 a month for each additional month after that?
I'll make a motion for 90 days at $5,000 a month extension.
I'll second that.
And that would be with all remaining terms remaining the same?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Can I ask a clarifying question? So your recommendation is that they would, the $5,000 would start right away. Or do you want there to be a 90-day period where there's no additional payments, and then it's $5,000 after 90 days?
Okay. Can we do the 10,000 and then 5, 5, and 5? Did you say 120 months? What they were requesting was four months at zero cost, and then you would have six months back at the regular term, which is $10,000 a month. So I think the recommendation is, is to go with three months and either at no charge or $5,000. Three months at $5,000.
And then 10 after that.
And then 10 after that. And 10 after that for six months. Yes.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
So 90 days, a three-month extension, price of $5,000 per month. Following that, it would be $10,000 per month to maintain the option.
For another six months.
For six months.
Right. Yes. Up to six months.
That's right. Up to, up to an additional six months after the 90 days. All right. Is everyone clear? There's a motion from Commissioner Belcher and a second from Commissioner Presley. Any members of the public who would like to comment on this matter? Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We now come to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
I so move second.
Did a first and a second, huh?
No, she did the first.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We're like dumb in ours.
All right. Next on the agenda, under good news, we have Nate Pennington, who's going to talk to us about the Buncombe County Planning Department being recognized by NACO for affordable housing initiatives.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and members of the public. We had the unique opportunity, and I think they're going to queue up a short presentation. NACO gave us a call out of the blue and said, hey, we'd like to feature you in a publication on affordable housing. So Buncombe County was amongst four case studies in the United States. Included in this were King County, Washington, which is home to the Seattle area. There was a community in Nebraska as well as Utah. And so we're one of the four counties. Typically, what you see on a lot of these studies, and it was really cool that NACO took the opportunity to reach out to us, because a lot of them tend to be city-centric. So you'll see a lot of studies about affordable housing in our urban cities, but we don't often see the spillover effects, especially in our gateway communities. So that's why it's important to look at some of the other areas like San Francisco, Charleston, South Florida, Washington. One thing we've learned, and we talked about this a little bit when we did the presentation on infrastructure, is what we've learned in North Carolina over the past decade is to work with a lot of our existing tools and don't rely solely on new-enabling legislation. NACO decided to focus in our, in our community-oriented development program, which you all approved in 2015. What that did was that incentivized density and allowed us to work within the confines of our zoning ordinance and basically leverage density for affordable housing. One of the, or two examples I'd like to give recently, working with MHO in Swananoe is the East Haven Development. This program helped create 57 dwelling units in addition to what would have normally been approved. Recently, also the Villas at Avery Creek allowed 75 dwelling units as part of this program. We've also learned, and what this article highlights, is some of our other programs through the Affordable Housing Services Program, where we've learned to bundle grants, leverage money, customize policy, and incentivize density. And for this, you see the ability to bring projects forward that not only bring us affordable housing, but also look at the opportunity, say for instance, in Swananoe across from Ingalls, to add two bus stops and give people the options for mass transit into the city. So it's not sometimes just about affordable housing by itself, but also bringing together multiple systems within a community. That's all I just wanted to share with you all, and the county's going to provide some hard copies, and this has already been featured on their website. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Nate. Great job. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from Dr. Jennifer Mullendorf about immunization rates in Buncombe County. Thank you for being with us.
Yeah. Thank you for having me. So this came out of a request, I think, from Commissioner Beach Ferrara. There had been a media story on BPR radio that I think caught her attention. So I'm going to talk a little bit about kindergarten immunization rates in our county. Before I get into the data, I want to just touch on a few concepts that are important when we talk about immunizations. So I think they're going to queue up a presentation. Let's see. There we go. All right. So first, something called herd immunity, or what we like to call community immunity. So this is when a high percentage of a population is protected against a disease, either because they had been immunized or because they got sick with the disease. And in this way, it can prevent the spread of an infection throughout the community. And so we talk about community immunity being a shield of protection around of our community. That's our phrase that we use at Buncombe County Health and Human Services. And basically, what you can see from this chart is if a large enough people in the population are immunized, at the bottom graph, if a disease comes into that population, it can't spread, so people are protected. But if you're up at the top of the chart, you have a lot of people who are not immunized, just one or two people coming into that population who are ill with an infection, it can spread like wildfire. And so this is an important concept. Another concept that is important to understand is something called clustering. So we know that people who have similar beliefs in regards to immunization tend to live in the same neighborhoods, go to the same schools, maybe go to the same faith communities. And so there is the potential for large clusters of unimmunized people to conglomerate together. The levels of vaccination that are required to achieve community immunity vary between illnesses. And so some diseases are very contagious, like measles and pertussis or whooping cough, so that it takes a large number of the population, a large percentage of the population, to be immune or protected to prevent the spread of those infections through the community. So about 95% of the population needs to be immune to measles and also to whooping cough to keep that shield of protection strong in a community. And I think it's important for us to recognize that immunizations and community immunity don't just protect us and our family, but are important for the vulnerable in our community who cannot be immunized because of their age, so like young infants, or because of underlying medical conditions that may leave them immunocompromised. And so in areas with high community immunity, we're basically protecting those vulnerable people in our society. This is just a map of the United States for 2016 to 17, showing the percent of kindergarteners in each state that had non-medical exemptions. So the darker the color, the higher the percentage of kindergarteners who had some sort of exemption from a state-required immunization. And so you can see that the West and the Midwest and the far Northeast have more of a population who is not fully vaccinated. But I would say that if you go back and look at the trends over the last decade on these graphs, you'll see that this has become a bigger issue over that last decade. And state vaccination requirements for childcare and for school entry are really an important tool for maintaining high vaccination rates and protecting the public. So in North Carolina, we have two types of exemptions from required vaccinations that are permissible by statute. So the first is a medical exemption. So this is an exemption because that child has a medical condition that would be worsened by a certain immunization, or that they had a prior serious allergic reaction to an immunization. And to get an exemption, a medical exemption, you have to see a physician and have a form filled out and signed, and then turn that into the school. The only other type of exemption that's allowable by North Carolina law is called a religious exemption, and this is supposed to be a bona fide religious belief that is against immunization. And there is no set form that this has to be filled out on. There is no one who has to sign it other than the parent to say that I'm exempting my child because of a religious belief. And in North Carolina, unlike other states, there is no state allowable exemption for a philosophical or personal belief against vaccination. That is permissible in certain other states. And so it's our belief, based on what we know about the community, that people are claiming religious exemptions, when in fact it's more a personal belief or philosophical distrust of immunizations. So now, let's take a look at the recent data that came out about Buncombe County. So to orient you to this graph, so the red line at top is the number of enrolled kindergarteners, and this is going from the 1999-2000 school year all the way till last school year. The blue bars are the number of kindergarteners that had at least one exemption, one exemption from a required immunization. So it's not necessarily that all those kindergarteners were not immunized at all. It could be they just didn't get immunized against one required, or didn't get immunized for one required immunization. And so the green line at the bottom is the number of medical exemptions. So you can see that's been pretty flat, pretty low for that entire, you know, two decades. But our number of non-medical exemptions has increased. Last school year was 145 kindergarteners. And what I would say is that we're limited, again, in what we know and what the state knows in terms of what is reported by the schools directly to the state, and then what we are able to get to the state. The schools don't report that to the health department. It goes directly to the state. And what they report is, we had this many number of kindergarteners, and we had this many who had a religious exemption, this many that had a medical exemption. It doesn't tell us what immunizations they're not getting. It doesn't tell us how many each child is not getting. So we're limited in that. And then when we look at, what is this in comparison to other counties, you can see that by far, we, this is just looking at the top 10 urban counties, as well as the state, they're the bar on the bottom. We by far have the highest percentage of kindergarteners with a not, with non-medical exemptions at 5.7%, which is the highest rate we've ever had. And when we think about it, Buncombe County has only 1/5 of the kindergarten enrollment of Wake County last school year, but we had 90% of the number of exemptions they had. So it's out of proportion, right, to our, when we look in comparison to the other counties. Our kindergarten enrollment is in between that of Union and New Hanover. And the other thing I would say is this county-level data doesn't tell the whole story. Again, getting back to that concept of clustering, we know when we look at school-specific data, we have kindergarten classes last year where the exemption rates were between 20 and 43%. And we had one kindergarten class with a class size of 28 that had a 68% exemption rate. So that gets, that's what keeps me up at night.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is, I remember years ago, people were concerned about thimerosal in the vaccines. Is that still an issue? I mean, do people still talk about that?
Right. So thimerosal, after all that media about that, it was, not that there was any scientific reason to take it out, but the decision was to remove it from most vaccinations. There are still some flu shots where that might, it might be included, but there are thimerosal-free flu shots as well. So that has been resolved.
People can't use that as an excuse.
Yeah. There was no scientific evidence to support that there was an issue related to that.
Thank you.
And then when we look at our trend, so again, this is looking at from 1999-2000 school year all the way up to last school year. This is the percentage. And again, you can see our trend in comparison to those of the other top 10 urbans in the state is just much higher and at a higher slope. And when we look at the state as well, medical exemptions for these counties have remained pretty stable and low. But you can see, starting around 2006, 2007 school year, all of the counties have started to have a slight increase in the percentage of kindergarteners with exemptions. And so what happens when we lack community immunity? So measles is what happens. We know that, you know, measles was declared eliminated from the United States back in 2000, but we know it still continues to cause large outbreaks in the world, in places like France and other countries in Europe and Asia. And we often talk about these diseases being a plain ride away, and there have been outbreaks brought into the United States because of people leaving the United States, traveling to these parts of the world where measles is endemic, where it's very common, and then coming back and spreading it throughout their unvaccinated communities. So Minnesota's had several large outbreaks. We probably know about the Disneyland-associated outbreak that happened several years ago. Again, we haven't seen measles yet, but the things we see... we see, whooping cough, we know we see pertussis, we know we see chickenpox. And we also see flu during flu season in long-term care facilities. This is just a graph, just to show some of the data we have on vaccine-preventable diseases in our county over the last several years. The ones that we most commonly see, again, pertussis, flu, and then hepatitis A and B, things that can be prevented through vaccination. And so, why, why is this, what's driving this trend? Why are people claiming exemptions? And so we call this vaccine hesitancy. It's delaying or skipping immunizations, usually because of concerns about safety or the necessity of vaccines. And so, what are our challenges in addressing vaccine hesitancy? So the first one is success, right? Vaccines have been so successful at eliminating or reducing the occurrence of things like polio, and measles and mumps, in this country, that there's no context for parents these days. I mean, I'm a medical provider, and I've never seen a case of measles. And so, when you don't have that context, you start to think, why does this necessary? What does it matter? We often try to overcome vaccine hesitancy with education, and data, and science. But, you know, while physicians are still a trusted source of health education for parents, vaccine hesitant parents are looking to other references. They're inclined to distrust these traditional sources of scientific authority, and they really talk about using the internet. And we know there's vast amounts of misinformation on the internet, and it's not like I can go to a website and say, "This isn't true," and take it away. It's there. And then also, Facebook and social media are, serve as places where the vocal minority can spread this misinformation. And exposure to anti-vaccine messages through social media really appears to intensify parental worries about vaccines, and lowers their intentions to vaccinate. And then there's this concept called backfire effect, where if I provide you information that debunks a falsehood that you believe in, it basically is contradicting your belief, and it causes you to become more entrenched in that belief, because it feels like a personal attack to you. So all these things we've been trying to do over the years are backfiring. And so there are some promising interventions. Like I said, this is not unique to Buncombe County. This is going across the United States. And so there's research ongoing about what we can do about this. So one of those is peer-to-peer communication, right? So having volunteer parents provide positive, or they find positive ways to share information promoting vaccines to the fellow parents, to answer their questions, listen to their concerns, that peer-to-peer relationship can help. Another is messaging to address the moral values. So this is about framing, right? So it's often that vaccine hesitancy is not an issue of education. These are often very highly educated parents. It's more about the moral differences between people who get their children immunized and those who don't. And what they found is that parents who are most reluctant to vaccinate appear to be strongly concerned with individual liberty and purity. And so, research is ongoing to figure out, how can we talk about vaccines in a way that appeals to those moral values? And then some states have enacted stricter immunization requirements to combat the higher exemption rates. So some states require parents to meet with a licensed healthcare provider, get certain amount, a certain type of education, and then a form signed, saying that they're essentially have informed consent for the choice they're making. California completely eliminated their religious exemption after the Disneyland outbreak. And so every state's kind of trying to figure out what's going to work, and what's not. And then, more recently, focused efforts on pregnant women and their families, because we know that parents who are hesitant to vaccinate their children often start to weigh their choices, and the risks and benefits of vaccination, while they're pregnant. And so, really working with the obstetric community, the prenatal providers, to get information to future parents. And so locally, we've started a Buncombe County Immunization Coalition. We're calling the Shield of Protection. We launched it in March with an event at Mahak. Because we know that diseases cross county lines, we have opened it up to other counties to participate in. We have healthcare providers, school and childcare administrators, school nurses, representatives from the media, and from local community organizations. We have parents on this coalition, and we want to expand it. So if you're interested, we'd welcome your attendance, but we're looking for more parents, grandparents, the faith community, anyone who's interested in working on this effort with us. And what we're looking at is this socially-ecological model. So basically, this is a way to, a framework for understanding the relationships and the interplay of personal and environmental factors that influence behaviors. And there's evidence that if we can have interventions at each level of this model, we're going to be more successful at changing people's behaviors. And so, how can you help? So the first thing I would say is advocate for immunizations, and get immunized yourself, right? When you hear somebody say something that you know isn't true about immunizations, speak up. Join our Immunization Coalition. Again, we are currently meeting quarterly. We'd love to have you join us. As I mentioned before, there's limitations in the data we currently can get from the state. And so, we would like to be able to obtain de-identify data from each school in Buncombe County, that basically says, all right, of these 28 exemptions that we have in kindergarten, you know, 10 of them were for the T-DAT vaccine. And it's basically so we can have specific data on what immunizations people are not getting for their children. So we know how to target our messages, right? Because the message that I would say to a parent about chickenpox is going to be different than the message I say about hepatitis B vaccine, right? Support us. There's an idea of basically promoting transparency at the school and childcare level, where they would post what their immunization rate is, so that parents would know. Right now, you as a parent would have to ask the school administration, what's the exemption rate in the school? And so making it more, again, transparent to parents and community members of how the schools in our area are doing. And then finally, you know, we have spoken with our local state delegation about potentially looking at changing our state requirements. And so, we'd love your support on, on any policy-level changes that would come about that we think are good. So that's what I have. Any questions or thoughts?
Just like to say thank you, and I did request this, just was sort of alarmed to hear that statistic, and thought it would be important to do more to sort of shed light on some of the trends, but also some of the things that are underway to address them. It's definitely concerning to hear about the sort of spiked rates in some classrooms in schools in particular, and appreciate the work that y'all are doing to just raise awareness and encourage vaccinations, and hope there can be updates as the Coalition's work progresses.
Speaking, so without knowing, you know, all the things that you, that you're, well, knowing the things you can know, is there any commonality among the people who don't vaccinate? Is there an economic factor? Is it all?
I mean, I think the trend nationwide, and I think is replicated here, is it tends to be well-educated, well-off, people who are, you know, doing their research and coming to this conclusion.
Right.
Yeah. It's, in our community, it really shouldn't be an issue with access, right?
Right.
But clearly, you know, we want to make sure that's not the issue, but that hasn't risen to the top. It's, that doesn't seem to be why people are claiming exemption. Because it, I mean, basically, we want it to be at least as difficult to get an exemption, to claim an exemption, to get, than to get a vaccine, right?
Right.
It shouldn't, they shouldn't, it shouldn't be easier to just write on a piece of paper, "I don't want my kid to get it," than to go get a shot. And so, figuring out how we can improve, make sure that's not an issue, and then educating, and hoping that...
Have we seen an uptick in mumps, measles, or whatever, in the group that did not, you know, who choose not to be, you know?
So in the, in the United States, yes. I mean, locally, again, we haven't seen any measles, but there have been outbreaks in the state, and it is, they have been in, you know, pockets of people who have been unvaccinated. So we've, every time there's an outbreak in the state, we hold our breath, waiting, like hoping that those people didn't cross over with anyone in our county, because we are worried that we have basically a time bomb kind of ticking here. Any other thoughts?
I think your comments on liberty and purity are spot-on. I mean, as a commissioner, I think it's important for, you know, the public to, you know, they're going to make their own decisions. You know, we can provide information that allows them to make a decision. And it's ultimately up to them. I have my personal opinion. I'm not, I'm not going to try to influence from here what mine is. But it is, it is a personal liberty to make that decision, and they have to, we have to measure it. We have to look at it. We have to be careful with. I think a lot of the conversation I've heard has been around the, around the, around the flu vaccine, and I'm, and, you know, on how successful it's been. And, you know, I don't, I don't hear a tremendous amount of conversation on the other, the others. I do hear some. And it's, it's not all, it's, some are religious exemptions, some are, some are, as you said, are parents that have done their research, and they're going to make their decisions for their children, based on, you know, how they can feel within here, and be comfortable. So, but I appreciate the information.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We do not have any public hearings, and we, there's no items on the manager's report this evening. Mr. Wood, is that right?
Right. I did want to mention a couple of things, if I could.
Sure thing.
I just want to make, make y'all aware, we did make the presentation on our formal application to the Tourism Development Authority for a $6 million project at the sports park in Inca Canler. That was last Thursday, and I think our staff did a good job on that. The other thing I did want to mention to you is, I think we reported at the last meeting that the Board of Appeals had prevailed in the lawsuit with RAB builders over not issuing a conditional use permit. I wanted to make you aware, RAB builders has filed a notice of appeal to the North Carolina Court of Appeals on that development, and so we'll be waiting for further information on that.
Is that the Moffett Road?
That's the Moffett Road Development.
That's correct.
We got an email or two on that one.
All right. Thank you. Next up, under Old Business, we want to have an update on the online checkbook project.
Wow.
From Eric Hardy, our interim finance director.
Thank you, Chairman Newman. So this report is in response to a request from Commissioner Belcher at the last meeting for an update on the open checkbook project. And that project reflects your commitment to transparency regarding financial transactions, and making that information publicly available on the county's website. County staff have created a working draft of the open checkbook, and our proposal is to roll out the open checkbook in phases, due to sensitivity around some of the data. And I'll explain that. Some of the data is protected by privacy laws. For example, we are obligated to keep confidential the names of clients receiving social services in the form of direct payments. The names of paid elections workers is another category of data that the county is prohibited from publishing. Certain payment data related to ongoing public safety investigations or undercover activities similarly cannot be provided to the public. So we're erring on the side of caution in the light of these privacy concerns. I'd like to give you the timeline for the rollout that we are proposing in phases. October 16th will mark the launch of the first set of the data. We're focusing on those departments with transactional information that is generally not private or sensitive in nature. To that end, we're asking staff from the departments to review the list of their suppliers, for the purpose of identifying those that must remain confidential. Additional data will be published before the end of the calendar year, as the review progresses. And we anticipate that all county payment information will be available before February 1st. So what content will be available through the open checkbook? We'll be publishing the name of each payee, the line of budgetary expenditure, the date of the payment, and the amount paid. For those payees whose identities must remain confidential, names will be replaced with client or public safety as general categories. The information will be organized by department or county function, and we will be reporting transactions that have occurred since, excuse me, July 1st of this fiscal year. The list of payments will be updated monthly, beginning in February. As you know, the open checkbook has been promised for several months, and I'm happy to report that the recent implementation of our financial accounting system has significantly improved our ability to fill this order. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
So how will, how will that be accessed?
On the county's website, and we would anticipate, you, there's a transparency portal, and publishing that information there.
Okay. So on the, it'll be on the front page?
From the front page, you can navigate easily, and we'll work with our IT staff to make sure that it's promoted.
Yeah, I think the timing's good, and like you said, with the new system that we've got. And I want to thank you for the hard work, and being able to roll this out by February, I think's very good.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much. All right. Next item under Old Business is a follow-up on the discussion we had at our previous, our last county commission meeting regarding health insurance plans for calendar year 2019, as well as a change to the sale of vacation days policy. So we'll turn it over to Mr. Wood to start this off, but then I think we'll come back to the board for a discussion, and see if there's motion.
Well, we've given you a proposal that is for two new insurance programs, policies. The first would be an 80-20 plan. It would maintain the same PPO, which is the preferred provider organization under Blue Cross Blue Shield. This would take the place of the three plans we have right, right now, which is a standard plan, which is 95.5. You have the buy-up plan, which is 80-20, and then you have the core plan, which is a 70-30 plan. The second plan we're recommending is a high-deductible consumer-driven plan, and that would include an HSA component to it of $1,000 that the county would deposit into an HSA account for the employee. So the employee could select either the 80-20 plan that we're proposing, or they could go with the HSA. So at the last meeting, I think some of you had requested some à la carte information as to what changing certain things on the current plans would generate in terms of savings. So we've provided that to you in the agenda. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. All right, Commission. Spent a lot of time on this at the last meeting, had a real detailed presentation. So is anybody would like to start us off?
I, I wasn't at the last meeting, ironically, I was sick, but I did watch online. Karma about that. I did watch online. I was able to attend with Commissioner Beach for our one-employee work session. And I think, you know, obviously, everyone wants to address rising costs, but I think we have an extraordinary workforce. And instead of approving this motion, I would like to instruct staff to do a thorough and complete employee education, work with county employees who, you know, it's, it's hard for me. On one hand, we say how extraordinary our workforce is, and then, on the other hand, this. I think we know that employees have been through a horrific time. We know the employees, when they're out in the public, whether they work for HHS, they, they, when they're facing the public, we're not facing the public the way a lot of county employees are. And they have borne the brunt of what's going on with this federal investigation. So I'm not saying willy-nilly these, we should just shrug away these costs, but I do think we owe employees the right and the chance to work with senior leadership to come up with ways. And I think there's a lack of education of what employees can do, what alternatives there are. And I feel deeply that the timing of this, with all due respect, is not right.
All right. Now, was that a motion? Or was, I mean, it was some, some good commentary?
Yeah. Because I, I didn't mean to go on so long, but I wasn't here last time. But I did watch it all.
No problem. Okay. But that's not a motion?
Uh-uh.
All right. Any other comments, or a motion from any commissioners?
Well, I can, I'll make-
I'll take a shot at direction.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we instruct staff- I'll make a motion that we instruct staff to come up with employee education campaign, educating them on ways to save, save tax dollars on their choices when possible without sacrificing their own healthcare. And make it a vigorous education campaign. Get employee impact input because employees listened a lot and they gave us a lot of feedback. And it was probably the first time, I think, employees felt empowered enough to really speak up. So I guess my motion would be to, I don't know if this is right, reject this recommendation, but instead, launch a vigorous employee education campaign.
Okay. Is there a second?
And I'm open to, I'm open to, you know, tying that together more.
Okay.
So since, since there's not been a second, can we continue the discussion and hold the motion? Or do we have to?
Yeah, unless there's a, unless there's a second to that motion, that motion's going to die.
It's going to die.
So we're just kind of still discussing it. And you can, so what are your thoughts, Commissioner White?
So, you know, the last time we were together, one, I want to thank the staff. I want to thank the county manager for this information. I think it's very powerful. I think it's very, very helpful. But I don't think it's, it's everything that we need in order to, in order to, to make the decision. I'd said before that I would not support a, a plan that did not include a major wellness and education and improvement of our team members' health as an option. Because long-term, it's the only way to get control of, of your healthcare. Any other, any other way is just reacting to external cost and you just, you just keep going up and, you know, and, and changing the plan. I do, I do think, so that's, I, I do think we need to direct staff, and it may go along with Commissioner Frost's, you know, education, but to, to direct staff to come back with additional options. One would include an improvement on our wellness options, to look at best practices of companies and other governments on what they're doing to improve the health of their, of the families at work. Any major, any, I mean, we were at Borg Warner yesterday. You go to Borg Warner and you can, you can see the investment that they've made in the, in the, in the health of their, their employees. You know, one is you just go in their, in their, in their lunchroom and you see the options that they have and, you know, some, some changes they've made. So, you know, I would like to see that. The other, I would like to say that our, that we have a 95, as we, as you see here, we have a 95.5 plan. And we have an 80/20 and we have a 70/30. I don't think anybody will, will argue that, that a 95.5 plan is a, is a rich plan. No question with any, any company or anything. So those that are on that plan, however, would not, I think, overnight want to go from a 95.5 plan to an 80/20 plan. So I think we, we should look at a long-term, we should look at more options on how we can get these plans closer. The other thing, in the, in the healthcare options that you gave us, it was, when I looked at it, it was, it, it looked to me that you could save more money if you increase the annual out-of-pocket rather than the deductible. Most people that I talked to are more concerned, I think, about the deductible, which does not return much as a, as a cost saving. So I don't think we have, I don't think we have enough options with, with what we have here today. I think that we're going to have to look at a, at a five-year plan so we're not annually reacting to healthcare costs. I think we're going to need to spread this out. And I don't know what that looks like in a motion. So that's just, that's my comments on, on the current plan, so.
I think what we've got to do is decide on what we're going to do now. You know, the employees are waiting and the clock is ticking. And when is the open, when is it, George?
We typically do it in October. So we were hoping for a decision at this meeting. But we could push it back another two weeks. But I don't know that you could push it back much further than that.
I think what we're going to have to do is, when I listen to Commissioner Frost and when I listen to Commissioner Belcher, it's great, we're going to have to look ahead and we're going to have to make some changes. But my concern is, if we do this right now, without taking a deep dive to look at over time, what we're going to do, what the cost is, is that I don't want to see us make a situation worse than it is. And for that reason, I would move that we keep the health, that plans as they are for this year. And then, when we start working for the budget for next year, we take a deep dive and look at the options we have. And that gives us time to really work on this and to come back with something that we're not going to please everybody. I know that and we don't try. But we've got to look at what's best for the bottom line and over the long term.
I'll second your motion.
And you seconded it. Well, I mean, I, I like what you said, Commissioner Whiteside. That is very important. This is something we do not need to rush into. And I think in defense here, Mr. Woods has come in here and he's laid out a plan for us in a lot of different areas. And I don't want to put words in his mouth or say something that I'm not supposed to and you let me know, is he is, he is warning us what we need to be looking for in the future. And I don't think it has to be done this year, does it? I, I'm going with Commissioner Whiteside, Commissioner Belcher of looking, let's put this off a year and get more information. Because I've had numerous emails about people that really depend on this healthcare we've got. And back in 2008, '09, '10, when it was hard to get good quality employees here, this was something that brought everyone in. So I would like to put it off until we can really look at this, how we can do it.
And I can tell you from experience, I went through this before, about 20 years ago. And we didn't do it right. We jumped into it and it took us three years to untangle the mess that we made at that time. So I don't want to see us cause the same problem here today. But George, I do commend you because you're doing the right thing in putting these, putting this on the table. Because we need to be prepared when the new county manager to come in. I mean, this, these are things we're going to have to deal with. I mean, we can't put them off any longer. But I think we've got to be strategic in how we do it and how we look at it today, though.
So how can we, we need to be able to direct staff to, if, if we're not going to approve this the way it is, we need to be able to direct staff to come back.
Don't we have to?
We don't have-
If we leave it the way it is, we don't have to-
I mean, we could, well, we would leave it, right. I understand if you leave it the way it is, you're voting against this, the, you're voting against moving forward with the presentation. Okay. However, you know, I think it's important that we take this, that we take this information and that we build upon this information, that we don't lose any of, any of this information. And that-
Right.
You know, the, the à la carte information that was given, I think we can look at some other scenarios and see what the costs are associated with that. And I, and I really, and I want to get back to the, the health of the team members and the wellness. You know, we've, we can't, we can't wait a year for that to come back. I mean, somebody's got to, I mean, we, we need to have that in, in a couple of months. And then we need to, we need to get reports on that. And what do we think it looks like? And what are some of the options that we can have for, you know, for, for, for team members going forward? So I think we need to build upon this presentation as quick as, as quick as possible.
And if we have employees here that want to share their thoughts, I'm anxious to, you know?
We will, we will take public comment.
Yeah.
Any other commissioner comments before we open it up for public comment? All right. So there is a motion, which is to keep the current health plan benefits for this year. That's the specific motion. But there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, follow-up activities that, that would be happening on education, wellness. And, and, you know, and just looking further at the, at these recommendations, if this is, if the motion is approved tonight. There's another component to, there's also, the other recommendation is to significantly change the paid vacation day policy. So that's not part of the current motion. But I'd go ahead and ask if anybody has comments on that item, to go ahead and do that too, so we don't kind of open it up for public comment twice. So if you have any comments on any aspect of these personnel benefits, we'd welcome them now. Mr. Yelton? And you have three minutes to comment. Please let us know your name and where you live when you come up. Thanks.
Don Yelton Jupiter. I told you the last time I spoke about your wellness. You need to cut a deal with AB Tech to provide that information and let them be part of, that be part of their requirements for a degree. Because we should be teaching them how to have healthy food, too. And I think we are. And that would be no cost to the county. Furthermore, I've talked to some insurance specialists, and by the way, I've been sleeping with an insurance broker for 49 years. And I can tell you, as a self-funded group, you can do lots of things that's not normally done in the insurance industry, okay? I have two rates for retirees and for others. But I think you've got a problem. And the problem is, you keep kicking this can down the road. Your interim county manager told you when you did the COLA. And you all discussed not doing a COLA, didn't you? I bet you, if you asked every employee, would you rather have a COLA or your old insurance plan, what would they say? Well, I guarantee you, they'd say they'll take the insurance plan. Because a lot of them are working for insurance. But see, you made the wrong decision then. Let's see if you got the guts to go back and do that so that that 1% that you kicked us taxpayers, you're sitting there just waiting to grab it. And all those millions when Mission Hospital becomes for-profit. And folks, if you don't start looking at managing your money and cutting your expense, you will end up, or Wanda Green told me that this commission was going two weeks before she resigned, spending money like it's going out of style. That's right.
She said that.
And I suggest you look at every dime you spend and you divide it. Yeah, it's funny, isn't it?
That she said it.
It's real funny. Because she was spending it and nobody caught it. So you weren't watching your money. See, what she was telling me was the truth. It's no laughing matter. Because that's my money and everybody's money, the retirees' money, your money. And it wasn't just her that was getting it. And I hope your investigation shows that. But I think you made a mistake. I think you need to ask your employees, do you want COLA or do you want good insurance? That might be the next question you ask. And that would give you your year to get AB Tech involved and do some things. It's wise. Because I've got 13 seconds. When I worked at the county, I had a lady went to stop smoking. She didn't stop smoking, I did. She died with lung cancer, I got COPD. Being self-funded, you could do things like that. Because you can do things that a normal company can't do.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Seeing no others, we'll bring it back to the commission. There is a motion. Is there further discussion on the motion?
I guess, I guess we're clear. Is everybody okay with giving direction on the things that we've discussed to, to staff? Everybody okay with that? I just want to make sure that we don't have a dead time.
I mean, just to be clear, I mean, like, we're going to vote, we're just voting on the motion.
Okay.
I mean, I think there's been good discussion and I think the staff, you know, listen and if this isn't approved, I think obviously this isn't the end of the process. So I think that even if it's not part of the motion, the suggestions have been positive. Mr., Commissioner Friar?
I agree. You know, I've got one person that was part of this that ended up, he's got insurance, but he had to take retirement. He was under 40 years old when he had to do this. He's worried about his insurance side and he's on the 595. I want to, I want to look at it, I'm like everybody else, I want to look at it in a way. But Joe, I understand the wellness side. And I think the people are the ones that have to make their mind up to do that. That's, but we don't need our staff working to tell our people what they need to do. Our staff needs to be doing their job. And that's, I apologize for that, but that's exactly, you know. Everybody, it's a free country. You can run if you want to and you can walk if you want to. But it's a free country. And if I don't, you know, if I don't want to do either, you know, we can see how the insurance can work. But that's just the way it is. Thank you.
Yes, I don't-
Well, let me, I'd like to just share a couple of thoughts. You know, I, I think the, it is free country. People can make their own, people do make their own decisions. But I do think the, you know, there's a lot of good research showing that we need to be encouraging folks to, you know, choose to make healthier choices with exercise and diets and all those different things that we know are good. Because if we incentivize those things and we do proactive education, I think there's a lot of research showing that that can be really effective in increasing participation in that, which is going to help folks be healthier and is going to help save taxpayers a lot of money. So I do think that those are, those are really important policy decisions we need to make and not solely, you know, just, at the end of the day, it is people's right to choose how they do it. But we should, we should encourage, encourage healthy behaviors.
And I agree 150%.
Great.
But the matter, the fact is, we had this when I came here. We did. It was in HR. Wanda got rid of the lady that was doing it. You know, we had, we got money for walking, we got money for this, we got money for that. And, and it was an incentive. But Wanda Green killed it. So, you know, we're trying to bring something back. And I'm fine with bringing it back. But there's certain ways that you can bring things back. You know, myself, I'm, I'm signed up to, to go to a deal to walk at the, the heart clinic in December.
Oh, that's great.
So, you know, am I trying to do something? I have, you have to make your own mind up to do what you want to do. And I've made my mind up. So that's, I'm tired of people telling people what they need to do, when they need to do it. That's my problem. And, you know, and young people, they're going to run and they're going to walk and they're going to ride bicycles. I did when I was young. And that's a long time ago. Two more days, I'll be 71. Oh, I forgot, today's David Gant's birthday. Happy birthday, David. And, you know, but other than that, it's a, it's, it's, it's a good day. You know, but it goes back, same thing. Let's don't push the issue too hard. Our employees have an understanding. And, you know, they're, they run the organization. And I appreciate it. But we just don't need to keep dumping stuff on them. You know, let it, let it flow. We just say where we want to go and that's it. You know, put a person back in charge of that, like was back in HR a long time ago, and step it up. That's, that's it. Put the chart out there, we're going to give you so much money if you walk so far.
Did you get your pun, Commissioner Friar? Step it up? You just said, step it up.
I'm going to try to.
I know.
How long did it, how long did it take them to talk you into walking?
Well, it didn't honestly take that long.
Really?
I went in. It's been, I'm five and a half years into lung cancer.
Yeah.
Okay? They decided I need to build my muscles back up to help you lungs.
That's great.
So I'm going to this class, hopefully in December, I applied for it. And it's hour and a half a day, three days a week. Now, can you see that?
You're going to run into, you're running to my daughter.
So I want to-
I'm working with your daughter.
Yep.
Well, don't tell her not to kill me, okay?
Yeah. So I want, I want to thank Commissioner Friar for agreeing with me. Because that's the, what he described is exactly what a, what a good company does for their team members, is they provide options. And they present it in such a way to where you make that decision on whether you want to do it, and then you do it. What I'm saying is that our options are too small. And that any investment that we make in those options is going, is going to return money to the taxpayers in saving healthcare costs. And that is proven across, across this country. So we just have to get, there are best practices out there and there are world-class companies that are, that are doing this and making these investments. And we just need to- that are, that are doing this and making these investments, and we just need to find out who they are and see if we can, if, if we can afford them, and if our team members want them. And if they do, then there you go.
We can bring, we can bring the lady back that did this. She still works for the county, and, and help bring all this back forward. It wouldn't take that long. So, I am for it, but there's a different, different way to do it, without taking all the staff, the leaders of each group, and telling them they need to do it. So, I thank you for what you've said, and hopefully what I said works, too.
Any comments from commissioners who haven't spoken on this item yet? Who want to speak? Okay. Don't have to, just ask it. All right, so let's go ahead and vote on this motion. You know, I just, I'll make one comment on it before we do vote. I also, you know, I want to, I'm gonna support the motion, but I also want to express my support for really digging into this. You know, several folks have emailed me or called me and said, hey, why are you talking about this right now? Why are these recommendations being brought forward? And I said, well, I think the reason is that there is genuine concern about the, just the growing cost of, of this, of these benefits. And the concern is that if they continue on that trajectory, it's gonna consume all the resources for so many other priorities we have for our workforce and for community priorities. So if we don't, if we don't take deliberate steps to manage these costs, that, I think that really will happen. And I think we've got it, we're gonna have to do a number of different things that folks have talked about tonight. And some of the recommendations that are in the proposed policy, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to do some of these things, in addition to other things. So I'm gonna support the motion, but I do look forward to working with staff and the commission to continue this and really make this a focus in the budget process this coming year. And so, thank you for everyone's thoughts on this, all in favor of the motion.
Could you restate the motion?
The motion is to, is to keep the current health plan that we have for this year. And that, that does, that, the timing on that does need to be made this month, because it doesn't align with the budget process. These decisions have to be made now. So it's to keep the budget, the health plan benefits for this coming cycle. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion regarding the paid vacation day policy? As recommended by staff, which would be to reduce it to one week?
I'd like to comment on that.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Is there a second?
Can I take a friendly amendment?
It depends on what it is.
Let me say it, and then you may, you may like it, you may not.
[laughing].
I'd like to change your motion to two weeks.
I do not consider that, I will not accept that.
Okay, that's not friendly enough.
Not friendly enough.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the recommendation to reduce it to one week. Is there a second? All right, that motion dies for lack of second. Is there another motion?
I'd like to move, can I make a motion?
Sure thing, yeah.
I'd like to move that we do away with selling the vacation back. And for the simple reason, that's not fair to the employees, one. Because you have vacation for a reason, to take the time off with your family. Two is, we might not be in the situation we're in today if people were taking time off like they should be. And the third reason is, that gives us, we can start offsetting with the money we'll save from that, the health insurance. The loss is on the other side.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
So, I'm not gonna support the, I respect the motion, but I'm not gonna support it. I do think that a week, I do think that there, that folks do sell that. I think right now, we're unlimited, right? Is that what we're at right now?
Yeah, still.
You can do, you can do whatever you want to, it's unlimited. That's one of the reasons why, I mean, I mentioned two weeks, which was my level of, of comfort. I do think that there are those that do, do use the money at certain times. I don't disagree with, with, with my colleague to my left here, Commissioner Whiteside, that it would be nice for people to take the time off. But I do recognize that some folks use, do use that money for some, for some expenses, and, and it's very, very helpful to them. So, I would have supported, too. I would support Commissioner Newman's motion of, of a week. So, I will not be voting for that.
Catch me up. So, now we have a motion of not allowing it at all, correct?
That's right. It's currently, it's currently unlimited. The staff recommendation was to reduce it to one week, and now the motion is to simply do away with it, which would make, which is, I think there's only one other county in our peer group that allows the sale of it at all. So, this would certainly not be an unusual policy for a county to not allow the sale of those days. Do, I have a question. Do we know, we had data on how much we think it would save if we reduced it to one, to one week. Do we know how much additional funding it would save if it were not sold at all?
Right.
I realize, we didn't ask that previously, so I don't, I don't blame you if you don't have that.
I don't know, I don't know. I don't think we, we don't have the data for totally eliminating it at this time.
Can I make a friendly amendment to your motion? It might not be friendly enough.
What is it?
It is to, for this year, allow two weeks, and then rediscuss it next year with the idea of getting rid of it.
I would allow, if it was for this year, one week.
I think we're back to Commissioner Bellchair's original motion. Brown Newman.
My, my motion was a lot more friendlier than you thought, wasn't it?
Chair Newman's motion.
My proposal's looking better and better all the time.
It is, it is.
Well, I, I'll say, you know, I, philosophically, I'm, I'm in support of the motion. If I think there was only one motion that would pass tonight, I would vote for the motion that's on the table. But I would like, it would be great to have information on how much additional funding it would save. I do think, you know, one of the folks who commented last, at the last meeting, said, I'd much rather give up that than give up the health changes. So, but if it doesn't save much money, then, then, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's not that much benefit to it, so.
What about this? So, I'm not ever for kicking the can down the road, but couldn't we not vote on this tonight until we get the data that you're talking about?
Right. Yeah, because this, go ahead, Jim.
Right, right. Right, so we could wait.
Yeah, so can we wait?
Can we wait and get the information at the, I'll withdraw my motion.
Withdraw my second.
A table, okay.
You have to, you have to make a motion to move it to date certain, is what you have to do.
Why don't we move this to our next meeting?
Makes, what?
And ask that we have the data on what we project the tax, the fund savings would be if there were no sales compared to the one week.
Well, and I'd like to hear two weeks, also.
Do zero, one week, two weeks.
And I would like to hear employee input on this as well.
So, I'm pretty sure that you don't get the, you don't get the four weeks until you're like 20 years. So, two weeks impacts a lot of folks.
Okay, who made the motion to defer to our next meeting?
I'll make a motion to defer to a date certain, which is, what is the date?
October 16th.
16th.
October 16th.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to move this item to defer, what's the appropriate terminology? To just continue this item until October 16th?
Tag late until October 16th.
Okay, all right, we'll have this back on the agenda, October 16th, we'll have some more data, and we anticipate we will vote on it at that meeting.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. New business. We have an item to consider, the Buncombe-Weaverville-Greenway interlocal agreement. Josh O'Connor will come forward to present this item. I want to acknowledge former Weaverville Town Council member Doug Durth, who is with us this evening. Thank you for being with us and for your work on this, this project.
So this is a relatively straightforward memorandum of understanding between ourselves and the town of Weaverville. This is to allow us to work in conjunction with the town to execute a grant that we have through the Federal Highway Administration's Surface Transportation Block Grant Program to allow for a design of the Reams Creek Greenway. It's approximately a two to three mile section that goes just east of Lake Louise and will extend past our facility at Carpen Fields, approximately parallel to Reams Creek. So, we'll be managing and overseeing the, the grant, just because of the, the size of our department and our ability to do so with some of the other grants that we've managed, very similar to what we are currently doing with the town of Woodfin. With that, I can entertain any questions that you might have about how that would function.
So that, did I read that correctly? That was a $60,000 cost? Is that the cost of? Is that in kind, or is that out of, did I read it right?
It's 60,000 capital that we're putting up.
That we're putting in.
The town of Weaverville's putting in the, the other 60,000, and the overall grant is?
600?
600. We're paying 20% of the, the total grant. And that's, that cost shares what's required for the FHWA grants.
That grant also was what was helpful in the 4.2 million for the project in INCA, is that right?
Correct.
Same type of grant?
Approximately 5.6 million for Woodfin as well.
Combined, yeah, so.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any public comment?
One of these days, you may want Jerry back. $60,000 is nothing, that's just peanuts. But Al, I'm gonna call your wife and tell her that's taxes on 49 houses in Buncombe County, okay? 49 average houses. So you look at that, and you look at what you spent for these other greenways, and you look at 40,000 for a voting booth, which is 29 houses. That's 39 plus 29, that's 39, 49, 59. That's about 70 houses, taxes from average houses in Buncombe County, based up on 2018 data that you're spending. I think you need to break down every dime you spend into houses. That'd really be nice, wouldn't it, Al? I think about that, just break it down, this is how many houses we're gonna take the taxes from. I think it might make you a little bit more in tune to save money and hold on to that house. Because who's living in that house? Probably somebody on a retired fixed income, if they have not been elected a county commissioner. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, or further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, we have consideration of a $56,715 budget amendment for the CLA audit contract and amended completion date of January 31st, 2019. And Jennifer Chilton, our budget manager, will present this item.
Good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. So yes, on your budget amendment summary, which actually was posted under the consent agenda, the one budget amendment request that was brought forward to new business is one for a request to use $56,715 of the general government contingency, which is already part of your appropriated budget, and transfer that to the Cost Center of Finance to increase the contract maximum amount for our finance audit contract with Clifton, Larson, and Allen. This came as a result of further conversation between finance staff and the external audit firm for a need to increase the scope of work.
All right, thank you. And this recommendation has been reviewed and approved by the Audit Committee?
Yes, it has.
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any members of the public who would like to comment on the motion? Further discussion?
Yeah, I've got a couple comments. One is, you'd mentioned the consent, you'd mentioned the consent agenda. The other items I think that are under the consent agenda are, are grants that are just kind of.
That's correct.
Coming through. So that's why this was pulled, pulled up. The other thing I want to comment on the length of what's in new business. The reason that there's so many items in new business is because there's not a whole lot of things shoved into the consent agenda. And even though it takes a long time, I appreciate the, I appreciate staff, and I appreciate the commission for sitting and us going through and getting the detail on it, so.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for saying that. Mr. Wood and I discussed a few of these items, what might go under consent, what might we put on the regular agenda. I think, I figured, a lot of these would be consent, consensus items, but, you know, but we do think it's important to, especially things related to the audits, that process. We just want to make sure.
Right.
Everybody understands everything we're doing, and anybody has a question, has a chance to, to ask it.
I'd just like to express appreciation to Commissioners Presley and Whitesides, and the members of the Audit Committee, and our internal auditor. Y'all are doing a lot of extra work this year, and just appreciate the way you're rising to the moment and giving us an opportunity to get the, an audit that's as thorough and robust as it needs to be. So, thank you all.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Next up, Nate Pennington will present some proposed revisions to the Affordable Housing Services Program.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and members of the public. I'd like to share with you tonight a few slides that just give a general outline of the Affordable Housing Services Program. Every year, this is part of a competitive price process, and we have a number of components of the program that benefit our citizens in ways that they may be able to use affordable housing and some of the subject programs. We have a, just a brief slideshow, if I'll go ahead and bring that up, please. And also like to make note on the agenda, just so this doesn't get confusing, the way this was broken out in your packet, you'll have an application for the Affordable Housing Services Program, manufactured home removal policy, the PowerPoint presentation, which I'm getting ready to go over, and then the resolution is as a whole. We're just gonna go over some of the changes, and if you agree with the changes, you'll adopt a resolution that says you agree with the changes that staff's proposed. So if I could get the PowerPoint presentation, please? Okay, I'll go ahead and start. It's not too flashy anyway, so I think you can work with me on that. The Affordable Housing Services Program, it was, began in 2004. There are a number of goals that were part of it. It was to increase the stock of affordable housing, preserve existing affordable housing, reduce substandard housing, and support homeownership initiatives such as things like Down Payment Assistance Program. The needs of the community vary from year to year, so we come with you with, with adjustments and sort of provide an update on a year to year. These programs, they consist of different funding opportunities. Some come in the form of grants, low-interest loans, and some are, one of them at least is a rebate offered for developers of affordable housing. There are a number of eligible activities associated with the umbrella of the Affordable Housing Services Program. Tonight, we'd like to focus on two items that we're making some changes to. And just a note for a snapshot in the calendar year of, calendar years of the fiscal year 2016 through 2018, the Affordable Housing Services Program has been able to support 387 units of affordable housing. One of the things we're noticing specifically with this community is for our existing homeowners and residents, they struggle with emergency housing repair. If you get a hole in your roof, and it's not repaired, and it's not mitigated, that starts the downward spiral. If folks can't take care of what they've got, it ends up just, you know, just immediately adding up to all kinds of different other problems. Mold, mold leads to degraded floorboards, you name it. So, as part of the new budget, the Commissioners adopted and, and gave $150,000 more to the Affordable Housing Services Program. We'd like to use that money to target our citizens that are in need of some of these emergency repairs. And it's not just a roof. It could be your HVAC system's out, and you don't have heat for the winter. Or you have a septic system that's backed up, and you create all, all sorts of environmental problems. We'd also like to do a few other housekeeping items to the application. That includes updating the HUD purchase price. That's just consistent with federal guidelines. And we also work with other organizations within our county. Health and Human Services Adult Program Services and the County. Adult Program Services and the county's Building Permits and Inspections Department. We work with them on repairs, not just for the ones that I mentioned, but say somebody needs an ADA ramp to get up into their, to their house now. Those are just some of the things we'd like to help with and continue to assist. It's anticipated with that $150,000 that we could help with the repairs of 20 to 25 additional structures and sometimes that's with a unit that may have two critical needs, like a roof and a septic system. Based on that, one of the components of the Affordable Housing Services Program that's been fairly popular has been the manufactured home removal program. Hey, here we go.
Got excited, didn't you?
I did.
Wow.
Okay, so, on the manufactured home removal program, it's popular and we know it's working because we get plenty of calls. So, one of the changes we made is we brought that fully into the planning department. We take the phone calls, we assist folks with making sure that they meet the application criteria, we work with a contractor to remove a dilapidated home, and then what we are recommending this year is that there's a replacement component. So, if someone calls us and, and they meet the criteria to have one removed and they meet the eligibility requirements, that they can actually replace it with another manufactured home or stick-built home or modular home. So, that's a change. And that essentially wraps up my presentation. I would like to give for you guys a couple of key dates. We'd like to advertise our application process on October 7th. The deadline will be October 26th and we'd like to come back to you in November with a list of folks that meet the criteria for the Affordable Housing Services Program so we can move forward and get some funds distributed. I'm here for any questions. Cynthia Fox-Clark and also Donna Cotro are with me. There are two subject matter experts, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, I got a question about the manufactured home removal.
Yes.
Can you explain the, explain the difference on why, and why this is, is such a big deal? Previously, you had a certain amount of time...
Okay.
To replace it. And this is a very, this is a, this is a very important part of this program. You had a certain amount of time to replace it and you, you did not know whether you could replace it back with, with another manufactured home. And it created issues where people would actually leave it there because they didn't want to run the risk of not being able to put something back there because it was such a short period of time.
Right.
Can you expand on that?
So, previously, the policy said that you had a one-year waiting period. So, basically, this change would say that if you meet requirements, you can go ahead and, and you have the county pay to have it removed and you meet requirement, the income eligibility requirements, you can actually replace it and forego that one-year requirement. Now, one, one thing I'd like to make clear is this is not part of the zoning ordinance. So, one thing you instructed staff to look at back in April was to look at some changes for the zoning ordinance in order to allow manufactured homes to, to have the ability to be placed in other residential zoning districts. We are actually going to be advancing with that and moving that forward as a discussion item in October with the Planning Board, so you will be seeing that as a text amendment at a later date.
Sooner than later?
With the ultimate goal of potentially with public hearing, probably bringing it to you by the end of the year.
Yeah, and we, you know, we've talked about that for, for a long time and I know that we have enough Commissioners to be able to, you know, for planning to discuss it, which is, you know, allowing multi-section new construction homes in R1, R2 is kind of a starting point for looking at that. And so, this is a really big deal, you know, being in the industry for so long, I know that there's a lot of, a lot of people that would not, would not move that home because they were afraid they couldn't put something back. And so, this, this, this is very helpful.
What's the, what's the reason for the previous policy of having a one-year timeframe?
It's a great question. So, basically, what we wanted to prevent, and it's especially important to note it now that we're in a development boom again, is that we didn't want folks moving in from out of state, snatching up a bunch of properties, calling the county to have them remove manufactured homes only to go right behind them and put down, plunk down a new home and turn a buck.
It used to be six months.
Well, the one-year policy is, is the manufactured home. The, the six-month is, is, that's part of the zoning ordinance again for the non-conforming section. We made some changes there to allow one year, so that's why we had to kind of look at these independently.
So, I'm still not, I'm still not sure, this is completely clicking for me, so if there were, you know, older manufactured homes that were in really bad shape, if someone did come in and bought them up and had them removed and replaced them, I mean, it's...
That's, but this is the, this is the policy of the manufactured home removal, if they call the county to actually come out and remove the manufactured home off the property for them. There's nothing to prevent someone from buying a property, moving the manufactured home off themselves. It's just this policy, the one year, that's what we're changing if you make use of this, of this program.
The people with their own, if they, people could do it on their own.
That's correct.
It's just if you use the funds.
That's correct.
But now you can use the funds and go ahead and replace it if you want to...
If you're income eligible. That's the difference.
Right, so like a big developer wouldn't be able to use the funds, but if you're a family or an individual who meets criteria...
That's right. That's our safeguard we wanted to build in there to help, again, targeting our, our audience of the folks that really need these emergency repairs. There's a couple of situations I can think of of folks that are gonna benefit from this.
What, with the income eligibility?
That's with the AMI, 80% of the AMI. Am I correcting that, Cynthia and Donna?
You're right. Um, you can...
Chairman Newman and members of the board, the policy change that's before you in terms of the abandoned manufactured home removal policy, if a homeowner asks the county to include their manufactured home to be removed through the bid process that we have, if we remove that home, in the past, they had to wait one year in order to replace that home with another regardless of whether it was manufactured home or stick-built. The change is if it's your primary residence, you can ask the county and participate in the program and then replace the manufactured home with whatever type structure that you want within that one-year period if you are the, if it's your primary residence. In addition, if you have a family member who wants to move a home in that place, they need to be 80% of median income in order to do that. So, that's the, that's the details there.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
All right. Further discussion or a motion? And there's two separate motions. One is for the Affordable Housing Services Program, the other is for the amendments to the manufactured home removal policy. Is that correct, Nate?
Yes, and what I was thinking is you could, based on what council tells us, is that you could probably combine those into one motion since the resolution is written for all the components.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Will they comment?
We will, if, if there's a motion.
I'll move approval.
Okay.
Recycling mobile homes was started about 20-some years ago, I think, and what we were doing was recycling them because of the value of the steel and the frame and that's part of the program that when it first got started. Second thing, I, I would like to ask this commission and the Affordable Housing Coalition, I think something needs to be done about all the vacant, old, rundown houses that nobody's gonna do anything with. I live next door to the house that I was raised in and the roof is leaking, the house is rotting down, it gets mowed once a year and they're holding it as an investment. The county does have the wherewithal and its means to remove those structures. Now, when I requested that that be used and evaluated in my property, I was told old pieces of property like that's a gold mine, but they're not taxed as a gold mine. They're actually downgraded because of that structure. So, the county can remove that structure and add that additional cost on to the tax bill for that piece of property and when it is sold or if it's developed, you will collect that money. And there's nothing but fair about that, folks, because how many of you see these old rundown houses all over the county that nobody's gonna do anything with? People have moved off, the kids are paying the taxes on it, hoping it'll be worth a million dollars someday because they see all the value in Asheville. But that is hurting people and some of those units could be made into affordable housing and used as rent and some of those owners might. If they're faced with the choice of doing that and fixing it up or having it torn down, what might they do? You're not telling them what to do, Joe. You're giving them a choice. You tear it down or you fix it up. The choice is yours. And I would like to see that considered by these folks as well as by this commission.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, we do have a motion on the floor. Mr. Presley?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to make a motion, Don, that's the most intelligent thing that I have ever heard you say right there.
It's making money, brother.
I mean, I'm hearing it from my district all the time about the abandoned houses and I've never wondered why someone has not come up with the policy to tear them down or fix them because the land is gonna be so much more valuable with a vacant lot there. And anybody that's ever seen a place that's been mowed one time in a year, you don't want to live next door to it.
Hey, you got...
Thank you, Jessica. All right. Further discussion? I do have one question on the home repair proposal, Mr. Pennington. You know, and I'm all for it, I think it's a big need in the county. The recommendation right now is that that, those additional funds that were appropriated be used for that focus area for this budget cycle. So, it's not a longer-term policy, it's, but it's basically saying for this year, that's where you'd like to invest some of those additional resources. Is that correct?
Yes, and we basically, if we find something that works really well, we'd like to report to you on the next year and say, hey, this, this program had this many applicants, this component had that many, but, so basically, it's on a trial run and this is kind of where we're seeing a need, so we're, that's why we're bringing it to you in this fashion.
Mm-hmm.
Hang on a minute.
Just a quick follow-up on that. So, I'm gonna support the motion. You know, there's, it's such a big, there's just such a big issue in the community, there's so many different strategies that, you know, could be pursued. I would be, you know, I would be more reluctant to support this if it was sort of a longer-term recurring commitment to this particular area, not that the need's not there, it is, but, you know, my hope is that we'll continue to look at just sort of how to stretch these dollars the furthest, how to leverage funds. And I guess, you know, so I think it's a good idea for this year, but I, I would, I would not want to have a presumption that we're gonna continue to keep this program area elevated at that level of funding compared to some other options we might want to look at, you know, for the, you know, future years, especially if we have, you know, additional resources to invest in it, so.
I just, Mountain Housing gave us a presentation about the home repairs and it, it is, it makes your heart stop a little bit to see what people wait for, you know, what they live through and I just commend that work because literally by putting a ramp in, fixing a leak, you're changing someone's whole life, give it, making them warm. I mean, we have people in Buncombe County who aren't ever able to get warm, so, you know, really the extraordinary work.
Register my support for both prongs of the motion as well and appreciate the work y'all are doing and certainly see this as one step among many we need to keep taking under the umbrella of the strategic priority we passed last year around ensuring that everyone has safe and affordable housing in our community. So, would love to keep hearing ideas from planning staff about other ways to respond both to the critical acute needs that people have, which oftentimes can't wait another day, but also to sort of the longer-term, bigger-picture thinking about how to really move the needle on creating more, more options for affordable housing. So, thank you all for this and look forward to supporting it.
Thank you. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. All right, next up is consideration of a request from our county manager to express support for funding for engineering and installation of BDAs and other equipment to improve public safety, portable radio signals in all public schools from the School Capital Fund Commission.
Y'all may recall, we got some faculty installed, directional antennas, distributed antenna systems in eight of our schools to boost the public safety radio assistance signals. County provided the $125,000 grant match, so we have a total of $625,000. The preliminary study done for that grant application indicated that we had other schools as well that needed this improvement. Our staff estimated that we could engineer and install BDAs and DASs in five high schools and three middle schools with this fund. In reviewing the entire situation, it's clear we need to proceed as soon as possible with engineering and installation of apparatus.
Excuse me, Mr. Wood? I think your microphone's off.
Oh, no, excuse me. Okay, how's that? In reviewing the entire situation, it's clear we need to proceed as soon as possible with engineering and installation of apparatus in any public schools with an engineering study determines are necessary. In working with the IT department, which will manage the project, they have two quotes for the engineering study with the lowest being $87,000 and I've attached a copy of that proposal. It's our opinion that we should study all 42 Buncombe County schools, all 10 Asheville City Schools and also eight charter schools for a total of 60. While charter schools, I should point out, charter schools are public schools, but they do not share in the capital outlay money, only operating money. Using numbers from Union County, the IT department estimates that on average, the installation should cost about $80,000 per school. They do not believe that all the schools will need the antennas as they have reported no problems in some schools in either radio signal transmission or reception. Consequently, we believe potentially about 32 Buncombe County schools and Asheville City Schools may need this solution. So, the current grant and match will provide 625,000 of the cost. What I'm requesting is that you authorize me to make a proposal for the following funding in October to the School Capital Fund Commission, which allocates the one-half of the Article 39 sales tax reserved for school capital projects. So, what you would have is $75,400 for the engineering study of 52 schools. And again, the charter schools could not be included in that because they can't share in that capital money, but we would, we would pay that small portion for them. Then we would have 2.56 million installation of BDAs and DASs in 32 schools. Again, that's an estimate, but it's the closest number we have. So, the total cost will be $2,635,400, but when you subtract the 625,000 we already have in the grant and match, the total funding request would be for $2,000,010,400. And I just want to stress that without adequate radio transmission and reception inside these buildings, we're putting our first responders, our students, our faculty and staff in jeopardy should we have a public safety incident because our first responders would not be able to communicate with, inside and outside of the building. So, that's what we're requesting. I have talked to both the school superintendents, they're supportive of this request. There is a safety committee that they have, I think it meets tomorrow and I'm gonna go to that first, but I don't want to go with that unless y'all are comfortable with us also going to the School Capital Fund Commission with this request.
All right, thank you. I'll just make a couple of comments. I think we should absolutely be following up on this and looking at this. And my only comment is the... And my only comment is the, I know, having served on that commission with Commissioner Frost, there's always a lot of tough decisions, because there's a lot of, this is an arena where there's always a lot of compelling projects, and a lot of them have to do with health and safety issues as well within our school buildings. So this, this will not be the only project that the commission will be looking at related to school safety, as well as just other, you know, really important projects. I mean, there's just roofs that have to be replaced, there's things that just have to be fixed. So it's always a, there's always tough decisions there, but I think we should absolutely go in there and make sure this is getting looked at, and I think, you know, the goal is we want to get this done. We'll have to see how many dollars are available in this cycle and look at the schedule, but I think it's, I think it's a very important discussion to continue, so I'm supportive of it. Is there a, let's do a motion to, just to go ahead and approve that we want to have the county manager bring this to the attention of the School Capital Fund Commission.
So move.
Any public comment on this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next up, we have consideration of a contract with Tax Management Associates, Inc., to provide business personal property services for tax listing and asset cost analysis for all Mission Health System, Inc. properties. Had a lot of really long subject matter items this evening. Thank you for being with us to talk us through it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you do have in front of you, as you just elaborated on, is a proposed contract for Tax Management Associates to assist our business personal property department with the listing and the cost analysis on all Mission Healthcare personal property assets. That would not include real estate. We have value on real estate, we know what that is, but we do not have a clear understanding of all the personal property assets. This is a huge undertaking, it's a large amount of assets, it's a complex corporate structure, because there's many companies that fall within Mission Health, so we're asking you to approve the contract to have assistance with making sure that we get that as accurate as possible.
All right, thank you. I'm very supportive of this. It's obviously important if this transaction goes forward, as it looks like it appears to be moving towards, that we get all this dialed in correctly. And, you know, I was at a, there was an event hosted by the Dogwood Trust over the weekend to kind of talk about what that fund is going to be doing, once that's up and running. There were some folks, and there were folks from all around western North Carolina who were invited to it. So I was sitting at a table with someone from Macon County, and we were talking about some of these issues. And so, you know, there are several other counties in western North Carolina where this is a really important issue as well. None nearly as significant as Buncombe County, of course, but, and just an idea would be, I don't know if we've had any communications with any of these other smaller counties, but they're going to be facing some of these same issues, and I wonder if, you know, if we're going through this process, if maybe there's some way we might be able to kind of do it together, you know, if we're hiring these really specialized professional folks, maybe, maybe worth reaching out to some of the other rural counties.
Actually, this, this started as a collaborative effort with all the counties in western North Carolina that have Mission properties. Those include five and six, five or six counties, in which I have spoken with directly, to ask them to come onboard, that we could get Tax Management Associates to do this, not only for Buncombe, because of so many of the assets that's going to be on the Buncombe Mission Healthcare books here, but are located in other counties. And we also negotiated a better price with Tax Management Associates for all counties to join in on that.
All right, well, thank you. You're way, way ahead of me. Appreciate that very much.
Sure.
Great job. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second, and also just have a quick question.
Sure.
Could you just tell us a little bit about Tax Management Associates as a, as a company or vendor?
Yes. Tax Management Associates, you should also know that they're currently a contractor for us. We use them currently for business audits for all of our business accounts. They do X amount of number for us per year. They're located, their headquarters is in Charlotte, they work all across the United States, they are a firm of accountants and CPAs who concentrate mostly on ad dorm tax and also business personal property tax. So they, they have many accounts, and they've done many healthcare systems also, and hospitals, so they do have experience in this field.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any members of the public who wish to comment? All right, further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay, next item is consideration of approval of up to $40,000 of additional funding for early voting sites in Buncombe County.
We've given you the background information on this. We've had a request from the, I guess you would say, the majority of the Board of Elections to do this, and then you have another letter from one of the other members of the Board differing with them, but I think the bottom line is this. The State Board of Elections has ordered that you provide an 11th site, and so with that, you have got to fund it. So what we're proposing is that you go on record as saying that you will approve up to $40,000 of additional funding for early sites. We are not giving you a budget amendment yet, because in talking to Ms. Valles, who runs the Board of Elections, she believes she may be able to absorb some of this cost, so we would come back to you in the spring with any additional cost at that point. But you do need to go on record, in my opinion, to say that you are going to fund this, because the State Board of Elections has ordered that there will be the, the extra site. And the estimate is somewhere around $40,000.
Okay, so there's no budgetary appropriation at this meeting, but we're basically, we're basically expressing our support for spending up to that amount, and once the final amounts are known after the election, they can come back and request a specific appropriation.
Right, and you're letting the Board of Elections know that you acknowledge that they have this issue, and that if they need the extra money, that, that you'll provide it.
All right, thank you very much.
You're obligated under the law to provide it.
All right, okay, thank you, thank you for that. You know, before we dive into this, I just, one thing I'd like to just say is, you know, I think that supporting early voting is really important. I'm very supportive of us doing this, and I'm glad we have the 11, the 11 sites. But I will, I do want to say to my other commissioners that, you know, when I was approached by constituents asking for this, and I said, yes, I'm very open to this, I'm supportive of it, I did not talk to all the commissioners about it before I wrote a letter to the Board of Elections, and so I just want to say that I wish I had, you know, frankly, it's one of those things where sometimes you just run out of time, and that was the situation on that, but I, I just want to acknowledge that, and some folks expressed concern about it, and I think that's, I think that's legit. So I just wanted to say that at the outset. Yes, ma'am?
I will go ahead and put a motion on the table for us to approve that the Board of Elections use up to $40,000 in additional funding to ensure that there are 11 early voting sites in the county, and report back to the Board of Commission on actual expenditures by spring of 2019.
A second.
Okay, so we're obligated to pay for the 11th site, right? Are we obligated to where that site will be? Because, you know, my concern is Leicester, Barnardsville, Jupiter, even the Candler area has a much longer distance to go, you know, and District 3, we have two sites, Inca Library and the Overlook Library. We're talking about some 12, 15 miles apart, and on two of the most congested highways, Henderson Highway and 191, of getting there. So where does that put that? We, we have not got the destination yet, right? We're just going to do one additional.
My understanding is, is that that plan was submitted to the state. Yep, with that location. So it is a specific plan of where the locations will be, of what they voted on.
I just wish they would have looked at putting it in an area where the transportation is very hard for some of the people to have travel, you know, 10, 15, 20 miles out, so.
You know, it's an, it's an interesting point, and, you know, I think honestly, I don't remember this issue coming up before us before. I mean, usually the Board of Elections, it's, I, my understanding is it's usually been a consensus. This year, it wasn't a consensus, there were a couple of different ideas, but, I mean, I guess I would just say, with the benefit of hindsight, if it, if it is going to come back up where we're going to be asked to do more funding in the future, would be nice to have that earlier, so that we could, you know, we could all look at this and, and not have it kind of been such a, kind of into the process sort of, sort of thing, because I think it's a very, it's a good, good question Commissioner raises. All right, there's a motion in a second, other further discussion, we are going to take public comment on this, too.
I'm, I'm ready for some discussion. Brownie, I don't care if you didn't have five minutes to call me and Joe and Robert. I don't give a damn, okay? I'm a commissioner. My name was on that letter that you sent down there that never came through this building, never was in this building. I had to get it from Jay Quinn on Friday, after they went down there on Saturday. You're right, you're a one-man band, that's all you are. No, two. Jasmine, you hang in there with him really good. But this site is two miles. There's a bus can run between it. Hey, Jake, how about going and getting that lady that's 18 miles away in Barnardsville from Weaverville Voting Place? Don't have any buses out there. But we gonna make damn good sure we gonna get them downtown, ain't we? That's exactly what you did. The voting place was already there. Done. Five of them. Three people voted for it, they had the money for that, and you decided to go off on your own, by your little self, with his letter that says, this is, the African-Americans need more things. Well, how about the poor old farmer out in Barnardsville? Or, as Robert said, Sandy Mush? Or these other areas? You didn't think about them. You don't, because you live in the city. And that's exactly what you did, that's exactly what happened. Brownie fell into it with you, and I don't care what you say, Brownie. Five minutes to Mike Frye, Robert Presley, Joe Belcher, you had it. It wasn't that short of time. Where'd you write the letter? Because it's on Buncombe County stationery. Had my name on it. I didn't, I didn't say anything about this. Not at all. But this has happened more than one time, when you worked over in that other building. This is what you do, and you really don't care. You care for what you want to, and that's period. Simple, and that's it. I know I'm old, and I know I'm probably senile, but the fact is, you took a job for the county, not the damn city. Okay? When that came up, that should have never even been brought up, period. Because the place that was owned, owned at the original one, was where Al said he votes at, and a lot of the other people in the area. When you're talking three people, an hour going through and spend $40,000, you don't care about the people's money. I can tell that. I got more on top of that that you've spent that's not been approved. But I don't, I don't like excuses. That's not an excuse. And that's where you're at.
All right.
The fact is, it's, you've cost us 40 grand, you and Jay Quinn, to put a place less than two miles apart. Less than two miles.
All right, thank you.
You know, could I say something?
Yes, sir.
Because I think this site is in my district, and it really concerns me. One of the things that I'm concerned about, and I guess, Joe, you talk about looking at it through different lenses, and I'm looking at it through the lens of the color of my skin. One of the complaints I have today about elections nationally, locally, and statewide, it appears to me that we are trying to keep certain segments of the population from voting, and one of those segments is African-Americans. Now, the precinct we're talking about is the Wesley Grant Precinct. That's where I vote. Okay? The majority of the African-Americans in Buncombe County now probably lives in a two-mile radius of that precinct. We are sending a bad message when we say, and not only that, it's in a good location because you have the people going to Buncombe Tech, you have the people going to Asheville High, you have also the thousands of people who work at Mission Hospital, who come from the west, go by there every day. So I think it's a good location. I think the location at 30 Valley Street is probably one that would park and it's poor and everything else. That would be one I would complain about, but the one where it is, in the 11th one, I think we've done the right thing, and if it costs $40,000, I think we owe it to the people.
All right, is there, let's open this up for public comment. There's a motion in a second, so you may go first, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Newman, Commissioners, members of the general public. I had actually prepared remarks, but I'm tossing them after what I've heard. I want to remind everybody in this room why this controversy exists.
Could you share your name and?
My name is Jay Quinn, and I do live in the city of Asheville, Precinct 17.1. Trina Valles runs a dynamite operation at the Board of Elections. She submitted a budget, y'all approved it, we were good to go. And then the North Carolina General Assembly pulled another rabbit out of its dirty, dirty hat, and gave 100 counties an unfunded mandate to have their early voting sites open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And if you had one site open those hours, you had to have all the sites open that hours. We went into this process planning on 15 early voting sites. Our budget would have supported that with our regular hours of operation, but some members of the General Assembly thought better. They opposed local control, they insisted on finding innovative ways to suppress the vote. What we are looking at in Buncombe County for this general election is fewer early voting sites and fewer early voting hours. Thank you, General Assembly, mission accomplished. Well, I agree with Commissioner Whitesides, our people deserve better than that, much better than that. And the simple fact is, 30 Valley Street would never, ever serve as a main site for our elections. North Carolina law requires that if we are not using the Board of Elections office as an early voting site, then we must have another site that is reasonably proximate to that office. Dr. Wesley Grant, Senior South Side Center is a little over half a mile away from the Board of Elections office. You can walk there, I have. There are no traffic signals. You walk through a neighborhood with professional offices and residences. That is a stark contrast to 30 Valley Street, which my colleagues thought was a suitable in lieu of site for a Board of Elections office. It wasn't. My site was approved because my site conformed with the law. My three colleagues didn't understand how far away 30 Valley Street was from the BOE office, and the challenge that it presents to people who, when they go to the BOE office for service, are told, well, no, the early voting site, good luck, you got to drive all the way up to the Central Business District to get there. We got Grant Center, and it makes it a whole lot easier for all voters. Please support this resolution. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
My name is Hanan Shabazz, and I live in the South Side area, and I vote at Wesley Grant every time there is an opportunity for me to express my opinion and my choices, that's where I go. And I think that this is very necessary, that we keep this open, because like he said, people come through Depot Street going each and everywhere all over town, and they do come to AB Tech, Mission Hospital, and everywhere. And I do feel that this is the time that we all need to stay together and let Wesley Grant be the voting point and place for all of our people to continue voting right there. Every time that there is an opportunity for them to vote, I think they need to be able to do that right there. I think they need to be able to do that right there, the space is available, and the place is available. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Annie Butzner, and I spend most of my life making it easier for people to vote all over Buncombe County. And yes, it's hard for people to vote in the rural area. I know because I spend every Sunday, year-round, registering voters and helping them apply for absentee ballots in the rural area of Buncombe County. However, I spend more time within the city, and a lot of time with the residents of Bartlett Arms, people who live in Livingston Heights, and I also spend a lot of time at Green Opportunities. When I went to Wake Forest with Jake, when he protested the early voting fan, the early voting plan from the county, Jake was a hero about that, and it wasn't about race, it was about more people voting. When we came back, I went to South Side and interviewed some of my friends there about having Wesley Grant as a voting site. One gentleman sitting at the bus stop described, "If I had to go vote on Valley Street, it would require two bus rides, one transfer, and hiking down a hill, I wouldn't vote." Another woman, Wilma Topkins, said, "I live in Livingston Heights, and let me tell you, there are plenty of people more who will be voting because of Wesley Grant than would not be voting if they had to go to Valley Street." This population really wants to vote, many of them are disabled, they can use walkers, they can wheelchair ambulate to Wesley Grant. So thank you very much for supporting $40,000 to enable so many important citizens to vote.
All right, thank you.
Thank you Commissioners, my name is George Ehlum, I live in Weaverville. And I just want to say that this would never have even been on your radar had the General Assembly not mandated the extra hours. You wouldn't even be talking about it right now. So if there's blame to go around anywhere, try to focus it in the right direction. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, there's a motion, Mr. Duncan, please go ahead.
Don, too.
Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, and public, my name is Stephen Duncan, I live in the city, I live in Hall Creek. I am reluctant to be able to guess at what number my precinct is, but I can tell you where I vote. I also serve on the Buncombe County Board of Elections, and I, by virtue of, I guess, the last guy standing next to Jake, I got elected the secretary. I don't have enough time, in the three minutes allotted, to be able to address some of the suggestions that have been made that don't exactly go with what I remember while I was sitting in those discussions. I will say that Wesley Grant was never meant to be excluded, that was not the purpose of the discussions that were had. It was in the original proposed 10 sites, and was going to be included. The question was raised, was that suitable physically as the best possible site? Having that question brought up, we actually delayed for two days our final decision so that we could investigate if there was a potential better site, a site that had been used previously. It was determined that that site could not be used, and for physical and other reasons, it was not available. So we proceeded to question whether another one would be possible, 30 Valley Street was suggested. It was no intent to do anything but to make sure that we had the best site, most available to the voters of this community. It was decided, and discussed, and my understanding was, is that there was some belief that Valley Street may be superior to Wesley Grant. Beg pardon, this question was brought up, and when asked which one was better between the two, there was no actual agreement, but it was suggested that we should go with 11 sites, not, there was no intent of one or the other, they wanted 11 sites. I can't speak for the majority of the board, but, you know, whichever site worked best, I think, was gonna be, and if it was gonna be Wesley Grant, then that was fine. Our next consideration was, and I've got a minute left, and I'll go as quickly as I possibly can, is, I've been involved in local government, I understand to some degree the Physical Control Act that y'all have to operate under. My background, my master's degrees, Town, County, and City Management, I've been involved for over 30 years. I didn't think that it was appropriate for us to usurp your responsibilities. You passed a budget, you gave us the funding, however the General Assembly presented it, we tried to operate within the funding that you provided. I don't think it's proper for any department at any time, whether it's an appointed board or otherwise, to usurp your responsibilities and your rights to make a budgetary decision. And as such, that's why we're here today, is we felt like it was appropriate to ask you to fund the 11th site, and to have that available, and so that's why this is here. All this other political stuff, and it's gone back and forth, beep, I apologize for all of that. But the truth is, is we had no intent ever to do away with Wesley Grant. It was a question as to whether we wanted to have an 11th site. And I could go on, but that's all you've given me time for.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. All right, anyone else?
Well, we don't even have to watch the TV in the national hearings in Washington DC to see politics played out. We're seeing it played out right here in this chambers today. I've never heard so much innuendos and political undertones in all of my life. Call a spade a spade, folks, that's why you can't vote on anything about controlling money. Yeah, you got a problem when Raleigh tells you what to do. You had that problem when Raleigh told you about your stream buffers. Yeah, but I heard something here tonight, and I heard this from you, Al, that Wesley Grant was important, that Wesley Grant Center was important to you. I believe this board could have solved this problem without all this garbage if the politics had stayed in Raleigh. And somebody from here, and a board member hadn't written a letter that wasn't approved by this board, which if I'm not mistaken, might be a violation of some kind of rule. And Brownie, I'm not trying to single you out, I'm just saying, don't ever do that again. Remember, I told you all, you had one chance. Remember that, Al, if you first elected, you have one chance to establish a reputation for yourself. And some of you are blowing it real bad. Because you shouldn't have written that letter, and you better leave the politics out of it. Because people are tired of it. When somebody gets pushed because they're black, they push back, right, Al?
You absolutely right.
And somebody white that gets pushed because he's white pushes back. And as long as we push each other, we'll never talk about anything. But guess what? Al and I get along real well, if I can catch him out there, we'll stand and talk for a night. Because until we start looking at people as people, and leave that damn political label at home, we'll get along a whole lot better. Because I've been both parties, folks, and there ain't neither party gonna solve the problem. It's the people that's gonna solve the problem. And folks, it's your people, you can't avoid decisions, you can't put them down. And thank God I don't have a degree in county management or city management. I got a degree in engineering and biology, I understand life and engineering, I understand facts. And facts is, how's you gonna get people to give their kids shots? You heard tonight, "Oh, we gotta educate them." You heard tonight, "He's educated, that's not getting the shots." So how can we educate an educated that won't get shots? It starts up there with leadership.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, bring it back to the Commission, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Any further comments?
I plan to support this motion, and if only we lived in a state where voting wasn't politicized, this conversation might be rolling out differently. I think we have a fierce duty to make sure that everyone in Buncombe County has the opportunity to vote, that we protect early voting sites. I appreciate the work of the Board of Elections Board in rigorously looking at how to do that. And appreciate the insights you've shared into that process, but, you know, we don't live, well, it's important to have local control in decisions like this, we don't live in a political vacuum. And by that, I mean, we have to be attentive to the fact that we live in a state where voting's been politicized to such an extent that districts that have been ruled unconstitutional by federal courts are actually being used in elections, where there's an amendment on the ballot this year that would require voter ID, and where racially motivated and partisan motivated gerrymandering has been found to have occurred by federal court. So part of our job is connecting the dots on policy issues that come before us, and vigilantly ensuring that one of the core freedoms in our country gets protected in this county. So I think it's a bit disingenuous to not address the whole picture and the whole context that surrounds the debate we're having tonight. So I will be supporting the motion for specific reasons, but also the broader context surrounding what it means to vote in North Carolina in 2018.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
I've got some comments before we start.
Go ahead.
So do I. So, my concern with this is, the Board of Elections made this, if I'm understanding this correctly, Board of Elections made a decision. A member of the Board of Elections went to Raleigh, and that decision was overturned. We are instructed now by Raleigh, by the Board of Elections, to, the State Board of Elections, to approve this, right? And I am placed in a situation where I believe in the authority of this board. Without our, I mean, yeah, we make, we make some mistakes sometimes, but there are certain things that come to us, and we have to make that decision. If I don't like that decision, I don't, I mean, the people spoken, the members are up here, we make our, we make our votes. It really bothers me being put in this situation. I'm not gonna politicize it, it just bothers me being put in this situation. I think the Board of Elections made a decision, comes back to us, I really don't have much say in this. The state has agreed, and I'm not gonna, you know, I mean, people are up here bashing the state, they're doing all these different things, you know, and politicize, it has been said, this has turned political, and it, it should not, this is about authority and good decision, and good decision-making. And in my opinion, the Board of Elections made a decision. I don't know the areas, I don't know which sites are best. I actually don't really have a problem with the money, what I have a problem with is the way all this went down. This is not the way that good government should be, should be done, in my opinion. It's just not the way that government should be done. You know, the decision should be made at the Board of Elections by those board members, and those board members, though they disagree, they should walk out of there, and that decision should be made. We do that every meeting. We make our decisions, we walk out of here, and then we talk about whatever, and that decision is made. So I'm not real happy being put in that position. And I'm not saying that any member of this boardness put me in that position. I think that decision should have stayed at the Board of Elections, and should not have come to us. So, nobody's gonna challenge my heart, and nobody's gonna challenge any of these, my fellow Commissioners' hearts on whether they want everybody in the county to vote. Of course we want everybody in the county to vote. Wherever you live, whatever your economic status is, whatever your skin color is, we want everybody out to vote. We encourage you to go out to vote. We don't want these political situations like this to deter anybody from voting. So it's disappointing to me that we have to, that we have to deal with this. So to clarify, we have to support this, is that correct?
Well, they basically said you've got to open 11 sites.
We have to open 11 sites.
And so basically, you're gonna have to underwrite that cost, whatever that is.
Because at the end of the day, it's the, just going back to the process question that Commissioner Belcher's asking, at the end of the day, it's the State Board of Elections, it's kind of the final decision-maker on elections in the state, and counties are responsible for funding the plans that they approve.
So I don't know where, I don't, so we're gonna come back and pick those, I'm not of the opinion to support this tonight. Because we're not, we don't have to do the, the next time we come together, we're gonna have to pick the 11 sites, is that right? Or am I confused?
No, my understanding is the sites have been picked by the State Board of Elections. So all we're saying is, is that you got a letter from your local Board of Elections saying that the state has ordered this, and they're putting us on notice about it, and wanna make sure that we're gonna provide the money to do the 11 sites. And what I'm telling you is, by state law, you got to do that.
Oh. Mike's not on.
Yeah, Mike's not on.
What I'm saying is that the State Board of Elections has made the determination on an appeal that you have to provide 11 sites. And so by law, you have to provide those sites. And so the only question now is, is it gonna cost up to $40,000 or less? And what Ms. Velez has said is, she may be able to absorb some of that cost. And so in talking with her, what I'm recommending to you is, is you go on record as saying you are going to fund the 11 sites, but we'll wait until we see what the cost is, and then do a budget amendment if necessary in the spring. But by law, you are obligated to provide the 11 sites.
So that's where I'm a little off, confused, and I hope everybody else is. We've gotta do the 11 sites, right? And we gotta fund it. Why do we vote on it?
So why are we voting on it? Oh, we even voting on it?
I think the only thing, because you got a letter from your local Board of Elections saying that there's gonna be some additional cost. And so they're asking to make sure that they're gonna be funded on it.
But it's a valid point in a way, we're not actually appropriating any money. In essence, we're acknowledging what our responsibilities are to implement the state-proof plan.
Right. And letting them know, we're going to do what is necessary to fund the 11 sites.
Still, the problem that I have is the way this was done. That's my big problem. Wesley Grant, Al, was on the first page, and was gonna be done totally in the 10, totally.
I have a process question, speaking of processes.
So, you know, it was, it was not a good idea to send a letter down basically stating that you would fund this, Brownie. That's your signature, not mine.
Well, I'll just, I'll comment that, I do not regret sending the letter, I believe in everything it said. I regret not connecting with each Commissioner to get everyone's input on that. The majority of the board communicated to me that they supported this. The question was, the Board of Elections was divided, there were two different plans. Citizens came to me, and probably came to others, and said, "We think you should support this." And I supported it, a majority of the Commissioners told me they supported it. I expressed that in a letter, that as far as I understood, a majority of the Commission supported the plan with 11 sites. That's what I expressed, as I said, I regret.
That's a poll, that's not a vote.
Well, anyway. Process question, Commissioner Frost is not here, so if there's been a motion and a second made. Ms. Hockaday, could you remind the Board? board how the procedure works now that the commissioner's not here? Is there, are they counted, when their absence, are they counted in the affirmative or negative? Could you please refresh us on that policy?
They would be counted in the affirmative, because they have no reason to recuse themselves from the vote.
Okay, so, we're gonna vote on this motion, Commissioner Frost will be counted as a vote in the affirmative, under county policy, process.
Under law, state law.
Under state law, even better. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Pass is four to three. All right, thank you all. Okay, we've got a couple of items left, the next one is --
Can we take five minutes?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, should we take a five-minute break? Let's do that, but let's do, keep it to five, we'll resume the meeting at 7:44.
What time are you, you after the next one?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, Steve, how are you? Good to see you.
I really want to go over.
[inaudible]
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 Open the Family Justice Center in 2016. And now survivors of domestic and sexual violence can access services from many partner agencies, including law enforcement, healthcare services, our nonprofit advocacy agencies, in one safe place. Since we opened our doors, we have served over 1,000 folks that have walked through our doors for the first time to get connected to the range of services. In FY18, our second year of serving survivors at the Family Justice Center, we saw a 44% increase in the number of people who are walking through our door for the first time. And as we close out the first quarter of this fiscal year, we've seen an 18% increase above that. So people are hearing about the services that are available, about the respect and support that they receive at the Family Justice Center, and continue to come forward to access that safety. In FY18, 61% of those folks connected with more than one service provider on their first visit, an experience that used to take traveling to multiple different locations, having multiple different phone calls, now they can do it at one place. Also in FY18, 83% of the folks that walk through our doors for the first time identified domestic violence as the primary experience of victimization, and 13% identified sexual assault or stalking as their primary victimization. The statistic that I am the most proud of is that 97% of our survey respondents had a plan to keep themselves safe and knew what to do if they were in danger after they met with one of our intake specialists. That's an incredibly empowering experience where somebody moves from being a victim to being a survivor. We also know that 85% of the people who responded to that survey said that they were experiencing a decreased fear and anxiety level. This work started around preventing domestic violence homicides after we had eight domestic violence homicides in our community in 2013. We're now moving forward in doing additional work in preventing domestic violence homicides, and part of tonight is that work. One of the first pieces that we've been doing as a multidisciplinary collaborative is improving our community's response to incidents of non-fatal strangulations. When a partner, when a person strangles their partner, we often refer to it as choking, but it's strangulation, there's significant long-term health impacts, and it's also an indicator of lethality both to that individual and a higher danger of lethality to our law enforcement officers who are responding to an incident involving someone who has strangled someone. With the support of the Governor's Crime Commission, we brought in national expertise to train our frontline responders, our law enforcement officers, our healthcare providers, our advocates, survivors who work closely with the Family Justice Center in recognizing the non-visible injuries that can occur from strangulation and helping to respond more appropriately. In June of 2018, with the support of the Buncombe County Commissioners, the Session Law 2018-116 passed, which added Buncombe County to the list of communities in North Carolina that are designated by the North Carolina General Assembly to create a Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Modeled after child fatality review teams, these teams are a multidisciplinary group of folks who have the opportunity to come together and review a case wherein there's been a domestic violence fatality, so that we can look at places where we could have done better and can do better in the future to prevent homicides. Under the Session Law that grants us designation as a community that can do a Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners has the opportunity to identify a lead agency. Across North Carolina communities, these are different agencies. In Mecklenburg County, which was the original community to start a Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team, that lead agency is Buncombe, is the county. And that's our recommendation in Buncombe County as well. Buncombe County currently staffs the Family Justice Center Coordinator position. We've served in a role of convening and facilitating multidisciplinary teams to address our domestic and sexual violence response and to coordinate those services. And we believe that it would be appropriate for us to serve as the convener and facilitator of the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Membership on the fatality review team is appointed from many different elected and community agencies, including law enforcement, healthcare providers, the district attorney, our Domestic Violence Prevention Agency helpmate, our chief judge appoints a couple of seats to it. So you can see the multidisciplinary group of folks who have been identified as team members for the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. The Session Laws that define Domestic Violence Fatality Reviews also provide the Board of Commissioners three seats, up to three seats, that you can appoint, and we have recommendations for those seats this evening. The first two seats that you can appoint are defined as "up to" two additional representatives from the community who have knowledge, experience, or expertise in preventing domestic violence. And then the third seat is a representative of an institution of higher education. The Coordinated Community Response Leadership Team, which encompasses all of the Family Justice Center partners, as well as probation, pre-trial services, our district court judges, our magistrates, many of the court actors that come into contact with folks that are experiencing domestic violence, discussed and recommended that we should have representation from an agency that serves people who are using violence in their relationship. So in our community, that is the Spark Foundation, who provides case management, employment opportunities, and provides what's known as the Batters Intervention Program for Buncombe County. We also came together and recommended that a representative of PISGA Legal Services, which represents multiple victims of domestic violence, low-income victims of domestic violence, in obtaining restraining orders, custody, divorce, those civil legal protections. So from those agencies, we now recommend for appointment to this board Jackie Laitek, who's the Executive Director of the Spark Foundation, and Julia Horox, who is the managing attorney of PISGA Legal, the Domestic Violence Team at PISGA Legal Services. And their full bios are in your packets. And then we also recommend to represent an institution of higher learning, Dr. Jill Moffett, who's the Associate Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs at UNCA. And Dr. Moffett is also the Title IX Coordinator at UNCA. Those are our recommendations, and we appreciate your continued support of this work.
All right. Thank you so much, Julie.
What is the initial, what's the acronym? SPARC? S-P-A-R-C?
I don't know that it is an acronym.
Well, it wasn't in there, so I didn't, I didn't know, so.
But it may be, and I apologize that I do not know the answer to that.
Supporting people's access to reliable care.
Thank you.
Internet.
Yeah, you're quick on that thing, aren't you?
Is there a motion to approve the recommended appointees?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Any members of the public who wish to comment?
I'll do that one too.
Sorry, what?
Do this one too.
Okay. Can we also, we'll do that in a separate motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve Buncombe County Government as the lead agency?
As so moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you, Julie. Thanks for your great work.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we come to a discussion of early childhood education. It's one of our county commission approved strategic priorities. This is an item that we are not going to have any vote on this evening, but we're going to have a presentation and discussion. And Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrara will start us off.
Great, well, thank you. And as we wait for the presentation to get queued up, let me just begin by saying a really heartfelt thank you to all my fellow commissioners and to county staff, and also community partners, some of whom are here tonight, for the real passion and conviction that folks bring to this issue of how we can best support every kid in our community. It's no secret that on our commission, we don't always agree on everything, and it's one of the reasons I love and feel honored to serve on this commission. But something that has moved me deeply is how much we have agreed on coming together around increasing our support and investment in ways to make sure every kid in our community can thrive. So tonight, I'll be sharing a brief presentation that takes a look back at the last 18 months and the work we've done together, and puts a concrete proposal on the table for what next steps might look like as we continue to look at ways to elevate the strategic priority we set around this issue. And then we'll be turning things over first to Amy Berry from the Asheville-Buncombe Preschool Planning Collaborative, and then to Kit Kramer from the Asheville Area Chamber of Commerce to make some remarks and share some updates from the ground on these issues. And then we will bring it back to commission for a discussion, questions. There will be no vote on this tonight, and there will also not be public comment because we're not taking a vote. And there's some pictures in here. In December of 2017, this body passed a strategic priority to ensure that every child in Buncombe County has an equal opportunity to thrive during their first 2,000 days, including access to quality early childhood education. We coupled this vision with some very concrete goals that are listed here and that briefly include collaborating with key stakeholders and community leaders to use a systems approach, increasing the availability of high-quality early childhood care and education, addressing issues of affordability, supporting the development of a robust career track in the field of early education, and cultivating a system that addressed the needs of families and children, including those impacted by trauma, poverty, and addiction, recognizing how all those issues are connected in people's lives. Decades and decades of research show us that high-quality early childhood education programs are proven to provide measurable short and long-term results for children in the areas of education, health, and future earnings. But that these measurable short and long-term positive impacts also ripple out in the lives of the peers, families, and communities of children who are served by these programs. This same research shows us that there is a return of investment of at least seven to one for every dollar invested in high-quality early childhood education. I like to think of the dollars we invest in this area as supercharged. They're not your typical public dollars because of the rate of investment they yield, not just in the economics, but the incredible investment in the people and the communities that we live in. In the last 18 months, we have together voted unanimously to support eight classrooms across the county, including several new ones, to create 138 new classroom slots for children in our community, and to support a workforce development pipeline that's incredibly exciting in bringing together Buncombe County Schools, Warren Wilson College, Werner Center for Early Learning, and AB Tech, in addressing precisely the systemic issues that have been identified and challenges in recruiting, retaining, and supporting the development of teachers. This June, we approved a budgetary investment of $830,578. I won't go through every detail of this, but I did want to take a moment just to highlight our process and timeline to date, and how public-facing this work has been, and how highly engaged we've been with community partners and stakeholders across sectors throughout it. This timeline begins in January of 2017, when as a board, we began discussing ways to increase our investments in these areas, and shortly thereafter opened an RFP that community partners began responding to. We made increased budget appropriations in June of 17, and then did two public work sessions addressing both access issues and affordability issues, as well as workforce development issues, between September of 17 and January of 18, adopted the strategic priority we talked about, and that has taken us to the moment we're at right now, a few months after having appropriated more than $830,000 in our current year's fiscal budget. This is one of the work sessions that we had together. And this, again, commissioners up here have a hard copy of this. This is a slide that just really highlights the extent to which collaboration is so key to this work, and the extent to which so many different sectors in our community are engaged, whether that's the Asheville-Buncombe Preschool Planning Collaborative, local school systems, local providers of early childhood education, higher education institutions, the business community, faith community, and every level of government, local government, state, and federal government.
My girl.
Yep. From a site visit where we got an incredible opportunity to visit classrooms across Buncombe County Schools. It was a great day. This need has helped to move the, I'm sorry, the way we've been doing this work in the last 18 months has helped to respond to the incredible need that exists in our community. But that need persists. We know that 46% of children in Buncombe County live in poor or low-income homes, and that 21% of those kids are living in households that are food insecure. These are numbers that stop you in your tracks, and when we think about the actual children behind these numbers, it will break your heart. I can think of no greater use of public funds or resources than supporting children who are living in these circumstances. On the systems level, though, we also know that there's a well-documented shortage of quality early childhood education programs, and there's a shortage of qualified teachers and staff for those classrooms and centers. We also know, both from the results of a survey and unending anecdotal examples, how challenging it is for families to access programs and the barriers they face, including This next slide basically shows our county and what childcare looks like, our early childhood education looks like across our county. Just quickly, the data points here are that there's more than 11,600 kids between the ages of zero and four, and that we know that among those children, more than 7500 are not currently in licensed childcare programs. There absolutely will always be a cohort of families that choose not to enroll and keep their kids home, and that's great, and often one of the best things for kids' development. So let's always make sure we recognize that. But we also know that there's a large percentage of families who, if given the option, would immediately enroll in a program, and we know there's a large percentage of children, especially those most at risk, who, if they could enroll, would immediately begin benefiting and would experience benefits that would ripple out across their whole lives.
So tell me a little bit about your map.
Sure. So let's go back to that. So this is a slide that was shared with us last year, and what it shows, if you look in your packet, it might be a little easier to see the data, but the two big data points are that there's 11,646 kids between the ages of zero to four, and that we know that at the time this data snapshot took place in February of 18, 4,141 kids, zero to five, were in licensed programs. So that leaves about 7,500 kids who live in our community but are not in licensed childcare programs.
So we're not real sure of the colors. There they are, number of children in the community. So the darker the color, the more kids there are.
Yep, exactly. Those are the densest pockets of where kids are. Yeah, it's a great, a great map. Happy to talk about that more, or I can keep going?
You can go on.
Okay, great. When we look at this issue in the big picture and over the long term, what we know, again, from decades of research, but also from other communities that have made significant investments, is that long-term investment is required across the entire zero-to-five age spectrum, and that this investment needs to be a mix of public and private funding, and it must feature collaboration across sectors. Public financing alone cannot do this, nor can private financing in the market alone do it. No single sector can tackle this issue by itself. Let me share just one example sort of of what that big picture, how that big picture plays out, and the kind of numbers we're talking about. So briefly, we know that currently only one-third of three- and four-year-olds in Buncombe County are enrolled in licensed programs. That's a rate that roughly corresponds to the rate we see for the total zero-to-four, five population. If in this community we were to embark on a long-term plan of providing access to 50% of the kids who are not currently enrolled, that's about 2,000 children, the maximum that that would cost would be just north of $21 million annually. This is a number we've talked about in our work sessions, that's sort of building on data that's in the Asheville-Buncombe Preschool Planning Report. This is, there's no way to say anything except these are big numbers, and I think it's important to acknowledge that, and that's part of why talking about the long-term investment and the mix of public-private partnerships is so key in this. Where we are today, and why I'm excited to have this discussion with folks, is talking about what our next steps will look like as we continue working on this strategic priority, and talking particularly about what early and significant investment from Buncombe County can do to help accelerate our progress at this time. What I'm going to put on the table is a very concrete proposal about our next steps, and timed to begin our conversation about it tonight, in part because of what's happening in the next six to nine months, as community partners begin applying for county funding, and as we begin our earliest discussions about the next budget cycle. So let me walk through this specifically. The proposal would involve creating a dedicated early childhood education and development fund. It would involve appropriating $3.6 million into that fund in fiscal year 2020, working with county staff in the weeks and months to come to create a clear, accessible application process, and a clear, accessible decision-making process for funding awards, and creating a commissioner subcommittee to play an advisory role during implementation. A natural next question would be, how would these, how would these funds be awarded? What would the priorities be? Well, it would be building on exactly the work we've done in the last 18 months, and exactly the work that's happening in the community. It would prioritize programs serving children in low- and moderate-income homes, prioritize the creation of new classrooms for children ages zero to five, support strategies that would allow for coordinated systems approach and scaling up, for instance, models like shared services, support workforce development strategies to support a robust career track, and finally, those kind of wraparound support services for children and their families, impacted especially by issues like poverty, trauma, and addiction. This is a proposed timeline that begins tonight. I'll make one revision to this based on a vote we took earlier in this evening, but the proposed timeline, which really is driven both by our budget discussion process, but also by something on the near horizon, which is that in December, community partners will begin applying for strategic partnership grants and funds to the county. The timeline would involve tonight's discussion, several weeks for questions, lots more opportunity for input from community members and partners, and then, although it's listed as November 6, it should actually be bumped up to October 30, that we would actually vote on the creation of this fund, and vote on signaling the intent to approve funds dedicated for this purpose. Next steps after that, under this proposal, would be that staff would bring to the Board of Commissioners recommendations for the application process and funding decision process, and that we would choose members for the subcommittee. By December, partners would begin applying to this fund as an alternative to applying to the general strategic partnership fund, and in June of 2019, we would make budget appropriations based on the processes that were put in place around funding decisions. Another natural next question, of course, is how do you pay for something like this? This is just a very general slide. This is, again, conversations we've been having at the commission level for the last 18 months about how this can happen. The basic buckets of funding sources would be property tax, sales tax, fund balance, a reallocation of funds, or some combination of these sources. And as we look at counties like Mecklenburg and Durham Counties that are taking steps to significantly increase funding, these are the types of funding strategies they're using. This next slide is a hypothetical meant to illustrate what this might mean. If, for instance, the entire proposed $3.6 million was funded in the next budget year, and if it was funded with property tax, this would mean an increase of about $25 for a homeowner whose house is valued at $250,000. We've talked a lot about this issue from our hearts, we've talked a lot about it as a policy issue, but I would be remiss if I didn't briefly touch on the legal authority through which counties can appropriate funding, and that stems from two sources. The first is the authority to fund community-based programs. This comes from General Statute 153A-376, where counties are authorized to provide funding to programs and activities that support residents who are in low- and moderate-income households. And specifically cited under the second provision listed here is programs that address childcare issues, but we also see health, education, economic development, and employment listed as well. Secondarily, there's a statutory authority granted through the county's ability to fund school-based pre-K programs, and those would be universal pre-K programs that any child in the district could enroll in. Thank you all for listening to this presentation. Again, you've got a hard copy of it in front of you. I'm honored now to introduce first Amy Berry from the Asheville Preschool, Asheville-Buncombe Preschool Planning Committee, who will share some thoughts and updates.
Thank you so much. I'm pleased to share with you some successes that have been achieved because of the Buncombe County investments and the work of the Asheville-Buncombe Preschool Planning Collaborative, as well as Buncombe Partnership for Children, and our community partners. I'm going to start with the NC pre-K program. So with the addition of two new North Carolina pre-kindergarten programs in Buncombe County through your support, not only were slots increased, but families had greater choice about the type of program, the location of program, that's critically important to families. Christine Avery Learning Center, one of the new NC pre-K programs, started up last year. This year, when we looked again at slots in August, they stepped up to say they would increase their NC pre-K slots as a brand-new provider. So great success there. But private providers, private childcare providers like Christine Avery Learning Center and the YWCA have identified the significant barrier to being an NC pre-K provider, and that has to do with a low reimbursement rate. So I am really pleased to announce that with the hard work of a group of providers and our local NC pre-K committee, we were successful in putting in an application to increase the rate for our early childhood providers in NC pre-K, a 12% increase, a rate increase. So we think that that's really going to go far to help retain our current providers, as well as recruit new providers in the future. The county has generously provided regular funding to support Buncombe Partnership for Children's Childcare Resource and Referral Services. One of the aspects of that service is to work with family child, potential family childcare home providers, and those interested in starting up a childcare center. In the past year, there have been four folks who have stepped forward interested in opening a home. Actually, there have been six, but we expect four new family childcare homes to open up within the year. And family childcare is really an important type of care, because it's a smaller setting which families of youngest children often prefer. So we will be able to serve more infants and toddlers in those family childcare homes. In addition, a childcare resource and referral services is supporting the work of a coalition of four local churches who have been looking at the needs of the folks in their community, both within their church and the surrounding community of the church. And I am also happy to report that they expect to open a center within the year to serve all the families that those churches serve. So moving to teacher recruitment and retention, which Commissioner Beach-Ferrara noted, there is a new collaboration that has been launched with Green Opportunities, AB Tech, and Buncombe Partnership for Children. And in fact, just this morning, the new participants gathered. This is an early childhood teacher workforce development program. So this nine-month program will provide intensive training, weekly coaching, ongoing professional development, coursework at AB Tech in their early childhood department, so that 15 participants can be placed in childcare programs to work as substitutes. So paid employment, on-the-job training, and will result in 15 folks being eligible to move into teaching positions in May. Last week, we had 10 childcare providers programs in the community step forward to say, "Please sign us up for that program. We desperately need substitutes. It will help us retain our teachers and support professional development." The last highlight I want to share with you is focused on AB Tech Community College. The last highlight I want to share with you is focused on AB Tech Community College. So their department, the Early Childhood Education Department, has a new home on the fifth floor of the Allied Health Building, and the new classrooms there, along with the demonstration classroom, will provide early educators with state-of-the-art space to pursue their education and help us attract new students to early care and education. Shifting gears and looking at the needs going forward, I think we saw a very comprehensive list of those needs, those priorities. I would say that when we think about the cost of childcare, it cannot come off the backs of parents alone. It's just simply too inexpensive a service to provide. It is going to take many resources combined together. And while NC pre-K is a free, high-quality program that has expanded and we expect will continue to expand with state money, it is a school-day, school-year program. So it simply does not meet the needs of families who need full-day, year-round care. So it's extremely helpful, but we have to be looking at the needs of all of our families. When we think about families who receive childcare vouchers, and those are available for families of children six weeks to 12 years of age, families are required to pay a flat rate, the parent portion of the fee. And we're seeing families who just simply cannot pay that flat rate. So looking overall at childcare subsidies, what we need is to be thinking about, how can we help families of children birth to five afford a program, looking at some braided funding with local, private, public investments, and to create a sliding fee scale, right? We are not expecting families to pay nothing for a rollout of an expansion for three- to four-year-olds. We need a well-designed sliding fee scale that will help provide some support to that expansion. And then on the workforce development front, funding to address the well-documented shortage of early educators. We could build on the pilot that I just described to you as well as the work that's happening with Warren Wilson, AB Tech, Werner Center for Early Learning, and Owen by bringing that sort of program to all of the Buncombe County high schools' education and technical certification training programs. The third area that I think needs great attention is investments in capital projects. We know that in order to serve more children, we're simply going to need to expand space, and that could be in the form of renovations to existing programs, to create classrooms that meet licensing requirements, and to expand on existing buildings as well. Lastly, I think it's important for all of us to recognize what is happening in our community with children who experience trauma and trauma that stems from many, many sources, whether it be poverty or children who are born exposed or addicted to opioids. No surprise, we're seeing those children in early care and education programs, and we are woefully unprepared to support those children and meet their needs so that they can be successful. So funding to provide trauma-informed and resiliency-focused care for early educators so we can do the best that we can for the children in our community. These kinds of additional investments can help us to scale up, develop, and implement a comprehensive plan for expanding earlier care and education with a qualified workforce that meets the needs of children and families. I would add that in a very recent poll, a North Carolina poll, it was a poll of North Carolina voters, one of the points that shows that just the deep level of support and concern around early childhood that comes out of that poll is that 80% of respondents said they would support increased annual state funding for early childhood development programs. 80% across the political spectrum. We need to capitalize on that goodwill and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kit Kramer of the Asheville Area Chamber of Commerce will close out this presentation section like this.
Good evening. The Asheville Chamber represents 1,700 businesses in Buncombe County, all who are committed to building community through business. In Asheville, we're in month 42 of having the lowest unemployment rate in the state. That's since March of 2015. We're currently at a rate of 3.1%. And yet, we know that in some areas of our county, particularly in those of poverty, the rate is much higher. Businesspeople tell me they need skilled workers. They're finding that some of the applicants don't have the requisite skills, or in some cases, they don't have the social skills, the soft skills that are necessary, like being a good member of a team, being able to communicate well. Even for those that have the skills, there's still barriers to employment, a lack of transportation, housing that they can afford, and quality care for their children. Costs are prohibitive, up to $10,200 per year for full-day, full-year preschool in a four- or five-star program for one four-year-old. 71.5% of parents haven't sent children to preschool because it's too expensive. And that's if you can find a spot, because as we've heard, there's a shortage of slots and a shortage of workforce to serve those slots. In fact, 42.5% of parents have not sent children to preschool because they can't find an opening. That's not good for the child. It's not good for the parents. It's not good for business, and none of that is good for the community. As Commissioner Beach-Ferrara noted, Mecklenburg and Durham Counties have both recently made investments in early childhood education. They see it as a smart way to knock down the barriers that exist to getting people into the workforce in the short term, and they recognize that they're building the workforce of the future by investing in very young children when their minds are malleable and the return on investment is the highest. So on behalf of the business community, I urge the county commission to move forward in finding solutions to this workforce issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Kit. Thank you, Amy. And you've got to get me back up here.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. As we said at the outset, this is not an item we're going to be voting on tonight, but it's following up on the work sessions we've had on this topic and multiple staff reports to start laying some specific recommendations on the table for what expanding our prioritization of this issue might look like. So I think at this point, there's just an opportunity for any other members of the commission who would like to share any thoughts. There is a, part of the recommendation is to bring this back for actual potential voting on some of these policy ideas in the not-too-distant future. But any other members of the commission who would like to comment at this time or ask any questions?
So I'll go back to the slide of 7,500 children that are not in licensed childcare. It'd be good to know how many of those. Let me turn this on, sorry. The 7,500 children that are not in licensed childcare, it'd be good to know what number, the number that have requested it or are interested in it or have applied and couldn't get it, you know, some of the things that we've heard tonight, so you can actually have a real number that you're looking at, because not, I mean, some have the support in some of these areas to, you know, MAMO or PAPAL, or as Commissioner Presley's called, P-PAL. I mean, some have that support, some don't, and I think that's a measure that we need to know, because we, and I know that that's not why that number is there. We don't want to put a number there that's not accurate or too big, you know, but it's a good start for discussion. I'm pleased with what the county's done so far. I think we've made a difference in, we're being selective in the places that we've supported childcare. And also, you know, there's been conversations about the Dogwood Trust Fund, which I think that, you know, will be an opportunity for us to be able to, hope, to be able to, you know, share with them the goal that we have for early childhood education and that they may be able to play a very big role, you know, as an alternative funding source so that we don't, you know, wouldn't have to use, you know, the, as much, you know, taxpayer dollars, property tax dollars for us. I think it's a good discussion. Glad to be part of it. I hate it's 8:30 at night because I think we might have a few more questions or more comments, so I think we're going to have to extend it. A lot of hard work was put into it. I think, you know, as a commissioner, I look at a penny. You know, that's a lot. $3.6 million is in this, and I don't know that, you know, that's a number that was calculated, just one that was set as a goal, but I think we'll have to look very hard at, you know, at being a good steward of whatever dollar we use. And the other question that I have is, we listed as a goal in November to establish a fund, and I would assume that we already have a fund because we've put $800,000, maybe we just haven't named it or called it something, or, so maybe that's a point of discussion either for now or later, but, because we are, I mean, we are meeting needs as it's brought to us. So I got the conversation started at 8:30.
Thank you. All right. Any other commissioners who have questions or comments at this time? I'll just make a couple of comments, and it is late. You know, we've had a lot on the agenda this evening and moved through them pretty expeditiously, but, you know, the hour is late. So, but, you know, I really, I want to thank Commissioner Beach-Ferrara for kind of helping assemble some of the information and taking the lead on the presentation on this this evening. And, you know, I'm excited about, as Commissioner Belcher said, the actions we've been taking. And I think his point about how many, you know, how many folks would really use the service if it were expanded, it's a great question. Look forward to seeing data on that, but we know it's just a really large-scale need, and we're not going to solve it even if we implement 100% of these recommendations, which would be, I think, very ambitious for us on the timeline that's been laid out. There's still going to be a big untapped need beyond that. This proposal would not fully meet the needs in the community. We know that, but it would be taking some really meaningful steps, though. So I appreciate the presentation tonight, and I look forward to us coming back and taking a look at some of the specific recommendations and taking action on those. You know, I see this as, you know, if we do create this fund for this purpose, you know, it's something that I think is, something that we'll have to then make sure we prioritize in each budget cycle to actually get there. Some years might be easier to do this. Some years might be, you know, investing that level of funding might be really challenging because the economy goes up and down, local governments get hit with different things from the General Assembly. But if we don't have a goal to shoot for, then this will not get the attention and the prioritization that it needs. So I think we've got to set the goal, and then we're just going to have to keep working really hard, week in, week out, budget cycle after budget cycle, to make sure we achieve the goal. So those are a few of my wandering thoughts this evening.
Yeah. And also, Jasmine, thanks for leading this, because you know what it means to me that this early childcare is really important. And exactly what Brownie saying right there, I wanted to hit on, is she's got this proposal out here. It does not mean that we're going to do it every bit, but it's just like George on our insurance and everything else. This is a goal we got to look for. We've got to continue this on, and the economy will dictate what happens. So I'm glad that it's brought, you know, I think that's our worst-case scenario is what you've got, right? That is our peak goal, right? And if we can get right close to it, I will be very happy because I totally support this.
So I got one other comment, just for suggestion, looking forward, you know, rather than having a dollar target of we're going to take a certain amount of money and invest it into this need, you know, I would really like to see us, what we've done so far has been target-specific. I mean, you know, when we looked at the map and had all the different colors and where are the pockets of need, where are the pockets of poverty, where are the numbers, where can we make a difference, and do we just pick a few targets and target those needs annually and then figure out whether we can afford it or not? My concern with establishing any, being careful with establishing an amount of money is that we just spend the money. And I'm not saying we'd be reckless or we'd be anything like that. I'm just saying that to be effective with any money, no matter what it is, we're going to have to have some, we're going to have to pick some targets and see what would it cost to do, you know, whether it's capital, whether it's, you know, in Kandler, or whether it's in, you know, South Slope, or wherever it is. I think we're going to have to be specific. And as we've said before, it is a lot of money. We were just talking about $1.6 million for insurance. You know, we're struggling over that, and, you know, and now we look at this need, and we're going to have to struggle over this, too, but I think it'd be, it'd help if we had some targets. I think it'd help if we had some specific areas we could go after.
I agree that we need the targets, but I think, too, in targeting, we've got to remember we need dollar amounts, because if we don't do that, we can't do a good job of budgeting. You know, if not, we'll have people coming to us every year, you know, it can be a bottomless pit, so to speak, when it comes to childcare. We could keep throwing money after money, but if we don't budget for it and have a dollar amount and set goals and know where we're going, my concern is, one, we won't get there, but, two, we've got to, in budgeting, we've got to look at our total budget and take everything into account. And I think we've got to do it because we're going to have to make some serious decisions going forward. I mean, and be strategic about it in what we do and critical decisions, although I look forward to making them rather than coming through this darn investigation and all we're doing now. But we've got to, you know, do that, and I think we've got to be strategic. Maybe it's the banker coming out, but we've got to, I think we've got to have dollar amounts, and that's what I like, Jasmine, about this proposal. You know, it might be higher than we want to do now, but we can bring it down. You know, we're not locked in to anything, but I still think, Joe, it's going to be critical that we get a dollar amount.
And I don't disagree with you, Commissioner White, because I just think that we're going to have to be, we're going to have to be very strategic in where these investments are made.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Because, I mean, if we put out there that we're going to have a penny and we're going to have $3.6 million, you know, and we're having people come in and ask for that money, you know, that can get way out of hand in a hurry. And I just, I'm very pleased with what we've done so far, and I just, I'm just saying that I just don't think we have to go from, you know, strategically, we've done a good job. You know, we've met the needs in some communities, and I think we've been good stewards. I just want to challenge us, whatever we do, that we do that going forward. And I know that, you know, we'll have somebody that's going to come and want to, you know, they're going to want a penny for affordable housing, you know, a penny for this and a penny for that, and if we do a penny for everything, we just have to be careful because it's just a lot of money.
Pennies make dollars.
Pennies, a penny with the county is $3.7 million or $6 million, so it's a lot. But it's a good, it's a good program. It's a good, it's a good, I mean, we all want to try to, we want to be part of this. It's just a question of what level, you know, can we make a difference and how fast we can do it. you know, can we make a difference and how, how fast we can do it, so.
All right. I'll just say thank you all for the conversation and the opportunity to dive in. Thank you again for our partners for being here and staying. It's been a long evening so far. I'm available for any conversations folks want to have in the next couple of weeks. And as, as Brownie mentioned, the proposed timeline and what I would like to see us move forward with is that this would come back on the October 30th agenda for a vote about next steps so that we can have, have concrete steps in place as we head into the winter, the beginning of that funding cycle process with community partners. So, thank you again, and thank you all for everyone's engagement and passion on this issue.
All right. We've got a couple of other items. The next one is regarding the construction management at risk services in the best interest of FYI 18 AB Tech Capital Maintenance Project. So Clint Shepard will present this item.
Good evening to Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, Clint Shepard, Director of Facilities and New Construction. You do have before you two motions associated with a construction contract for a batch of capital projects at the AB Tech campus. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143-128.1, Regarding Guidelines for Construction Management at Risk Contracts, which does give you as a board, government authorization to use this said contract, I'm recommending contract execution with Vanoy Construction as selected by state guidelines found within North Carolina General Statute 143-64.31, Article D, for the FYI 18 capital repairs needed on the main AB Tech campus in the amount of $3.683 million. This contract delivery method offers many advantages that will definitely help us out in executing this project that is considered high-risk. And looking at the project details, it's various unrelated repairs. When I say unrelated repairs, I'm, I'm not talking about new construction, where you have the foundation, then you have the walls, then you have the roof. I'm talking about, we're going to be working on HVAC improvements, we're going to be working on the fire alarm system, we're going to be working on roof replacements, and it's primarily driven by the focus of priorities. The, the campus is in need of some dire attention, and we're just having to take it piece by piece and look at those priorities and really look at what's needed first and foremost, and then kick the can down to next year to address those as, as, as we continue to plan. It is multiple buildings. It's not on one building, it's not on a group of five buildings that are right next to each other. It's on a, a campus of 140 acres, 11 buildings of the total buildings. I'm not sure how many is on the campus, but it will be in 11 buildings consisting of over 350,000 square feet. And we will be pursuing this with multiple construction shifts both, both day and night. Again, it is a, it's an occupied campus, and these details represent a significant level of complexity. And, and two significant factors to keep in mind, again, around occupied campus is the, is, is safety. There's going to be students on site, there's going to be a lot of construction and a lot of method to the madness and the, and the dissectedness of, you know, the work that's taking place. And then another significant advantage is the budget control. The, you know, because of this complexity, there is uncertainty. And the best way to mitigate this uncertainty is through a construction manager at risk contract where you have a, a very front-loaded planning process with multiple team members around the table. You've got your architects, your engineers, you've got your subcontractors, and you've got the construction manager that are all around the table in the beginning, rather than after, after a contract is rewarded, is awarded. North Carolina General Statute 143, again, 143-128.1 specifically states "Construction management at risk services may be used by the public entity only after the public entity has concluded that construction management at risk services is in the best interest of the project and the best interest of the public entity," as compared to the advantages and disadvantages of, of other contract methods. So you have been provided as part of the documentation, a more comprehensive narrative of those advantages of construction manage, construction management at risk, as I've highlighted those. And the burden of investigation has been met. Therefore, it's of my professional conclusion and recommendation that in the best interest of county funding and the project itself, you move forward with the execution of this contract. And that being said, I'm open to any questions, and I will add that I do have Greg Israel here, the subject matter expert, as it relates to the overarching AB Tech projects.
I thank you for what you're all doing. I've been part of this since the conception. It's, it's hard because quarter cent sales tax has been bled, and Clint, all the team have done a good job. The lady is talking about the fifth floor of the Allied Health Building. Y'all did that. That saved us, what, $2 million?
About.
Yeah. So, I am totally in support of this. I will put it forward that, you know, these gentlemen know what they're doing. They know risk management. I just remember when Creighton would walk in the room, he'd say, "Well, I need $7 million," and they're going to work in the morning. They haven't done that. So, thank you. Greg, thank you for everything that you're doing in, in this process. Mr. Green, or Wood, thank you for stepping up and looking at this project with me. So it's not going to be easy, but it can be, it can be done. So I would like to make a motion to approve this.
Second.
All right. So, and just for clarification, this will be the motion, there'll be two motions. There'll be a secondary motion, a second motion after this, and this one is for the construction management at risk services being in the best interest of the FYI 18 AB Tech Capital Maintenance Project, and noting that the county has compared the advantages and disadvantages of using CMAR in lieu of other construction delivery methods as per North Carolina General Statute 143-128.1E. All right.
That's what he said.
Further discussion? Any members of the public who would like to comment on this or the second motion that will be taking up, which is related to this? Mr. Yelton?
No criticism, but I would like to see, I think you have a course in construction management at AB Tech. I would like to see those students spend time with these gentlemen, observing them doing their job, helping them if they need to go get a tool or whatever, because you cannot beat on-site experience. And this would be one of the greatest things that someone's taking construction management could do, would be to work a couple of hours a day with these guys as these projects are going forward. It wouldn't hurt them to do a little something and get a little skin in the game. So I'd just like to throw that suggestion out.
Thank you.
That's a good point.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We also need a motion to approve a construction manager at risk contract with Vanoy Construction for the FYI 18 AB Tech Capital Maintenance Project, renovating portions of 11 buildings.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. We now come to
Not anymore.
Public comment.
I don't want to see them in here at 9 o'clock again.
Board appointments.
Board appointments.
Sorry, thank you.
Well, we're going to have shortness due to-
Two board appointments. We've got two reappointments on the Nursing Home Advisory Committee. I move to appoint John Bernhardt and Linda Burrell.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I nominate the reappointment of Mary Adami to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now we come to public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on any items that we have not previously had public comment on this evening? Yes, sir?
I can speak in public comment myself.
Okay. Mr. Yelton?
Thank you, Brownie, for looking at me. I'm sure you figured I had something to say. I'm very serious about making this suggestion. I think everything you look at, you ought to start expressing in the number of houses it takes. 830,000, that takes 528 housing units. 2.1 million takes about 1,500 housing units. And we need to know how many houses in the county, and that way you won't get your head skinned out because you can see those houses disappear as you fund projects. Because you all, you, what you all hear is nothing but help. Give me help. We need this. We're in poor shape. Give me money. Give me money. Give me money. Now, I want this done. I'm by this like I am by the checkbook on the internet, so what does that tell you? I want to see the number of people that votes at each early voting site, the number each day, so we can look at that and evaluate what it costs. Because I don't care what the State Board of Elections says, I don't care what the County Board of Elections says, they're not paying for this stuff. So we need to know what we got for our buck, don't we? Has nothing to do with location. It has to do with we have got voting to where it's not important anymore. I remember the old day, you had one day to vote, school closed, and, boy, Al, everybody was excited, weren't we? We got excited because we had to get out and vote, or our mom and dad had to get out and vote. Now it's just like anytime we want to, we go vote. And I don't think we're voting any better now than we did then. But I sit here and I listen. Can't afford healthcare, can't afford childcare, can't afford houses, can't afford food. Y'all have got to decide, are you going to support children, our greenways, our cola, our healthcare? You were talking about that, Al. You're going to have to establish some priorities, folks. And I'm very disappointed in one commissioner sitting up there that's addressed a political issue that's being voted on in the election. And I want to know, how many of you sitting up there, when you lay down tonight and go to sleep, do you not want to know that the person voting for you is who they say they are? But are you so important and want to be elected so bad, you don't care who votes for you? Who they are, what they are, where they came from, are they voting twice? Folks, that, I'm very disappointed in a commissioner that brought that up. Because I want to know who's elected my representatives on the county, the state, and the national level. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Frer. Well, this has to do with a, I'm going to read this here. "I have a problem, again, with the lack of transparency. We currently have a second county-" I'm done already?
I've got five seconds left.
Okay. "A lack of transparency. We currently have a second county attorney who has never been publicly brought forward, voted on, confirmed. This attorney has been working since May the 18th, according to the invoices. I have been presented in closed session meetings without the authority to be there, while voting publicly for Ms. Huckaday's to be the county attorney on June the 19th. We have never had or needed two attorneys for this board. We have not approved a second attorney. So far, the second attorney has billed us $27,000, though the county staff is unable to pay these fees without proper approval. I haven't been able to get this placed on the agenda to discuss or to vote." Brownie, you've talked to this gentleman $3,800 worth in two months. That's what he's charged us. We've got $7,800 in the first bill, $80-some-hundred in the second bill, unquestionable stuff. We've even, you've even had him talking to Ron Payne, which is in the back room. It's cost us, oh, $1,600 to talk to him. He's talked to Frew, $3,000 worth. He's talked to Kurt Euler, $850 worth, and our texts and emails have cost us $1,400. He's not getting paid because he don't work for us. I don't care, you can ask him. The bills are here, and there's going to be another bill, and I want to see it, too. And I want to see, because anybody wants these, I got them. I got the bill, too, and I've got them marked out. Who's done what? If you want one, you're more than welcome to them. Ever anybody's welcome to them. But right now, there's something else that you've done that's illegal. Yeah. Even having, when y'all did the resolution to do the forensic audit, you had him get with Lamar, and that cost us $125. People in this room are not smart enough to do that. We got a attorney back there, we got one here, one is here that left. So my time is up. But if y'all want to put this on the agenda, we can do it. But this is, this is backdoor normally for you, period. That's what you do. You did it at the city, you put a thing on, let Asheville vote.
All right.
And this is what you do.
All right. Thank you. You know, I-
If you can't speak to me now.
This is not on the agenda, so we're not going to have a big deliberation about this tonight. But I will just say, if the commission wants to put this on the agenda-
Let's put it on the agenda next time.
There's a process for doing that. And, and all you have to do is, is request it, and you have to show that there's two other commissioners that want to put it on the agenda, and it would be. There's a process. All of us go through the same process. So be happy-
No, we didn't. Why didn't we put it on the agenda before?
I don't think there was a request from-
Why would there be a request? This person, you all, sat in that back room. There you go. There goes your transparency. Now the people are not getting paid because they don't work for us.
Well, we're about to go into a closed session to, which we'll vote on in just a second, to consult with a different attorney that's working, doing work for the county, that this board, that this board has also never voted on. So-
He didn't have to vote on you because he can get prior by the county manager.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
So in the best interest of time, can we put this on the agenda for-
Let's just go through the regular process to do that. Three commissioners want to put it on the agenda, it's automatically on there. So let's, let's do that. All right. We do have a, we, we do need to have a closed session. Ms. Huckaday, could you please share with us the issue that we'll be discussing?
Mr. Chairman, you have two closed sessions tonight. One is to consult with an attorney retained by the county for representation under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3. And that would be to discuss the matter of County of Buncombe versus Wanda Skellington-Green and Michael Green, 18 CVS, O2577. And then the next matter would be to discuss the qualifications of a potential employee under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to go into closed session? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We do not anticipate taking any actions when we come out of closed session. We will simply adjourn the meeting. Sorry. Last thing before we adjourn, I did mean to announce that the next meeting of the county commission will be held at 200 College Street on October 16th at 5:00 p.m. On October 16th at 1:00 p.m., Mission Health Forward Update will hold a meeting at 200 College Street, the first-floor conference room in downtown. And then finally, the last meeting of October will be held on October 30th at 5:00 p.m. in the commissioners' chambers at 200 College Street, Room 326. All right. We're in closed session.